Good evening and welcome to. Got a bunch of people who like to help me back here. Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, April 16th, 2024, regular meeting of the Walnut Creek City Council. Let me read my first item. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Walnut Creek City Council. The city council is conducting this meeting from the city council chamber. This meeting is being video streamed and can be viewed live or later on the city's website. As some attendees may be participating in their first Walnut Creek City Council meeting, I wanted to welcome everyone and talk briefly about the public comment process. For each agenda item, there will be an opportunity for public comment on the item. Thus, if you desire to speak to an item on the agenda this evening, please hold your comments until the city council considers that item. Additionally, we have a section on the agenda entitled "Public Communications", which is for the public comments for items not on the agenda. Any comments during public communication should not relate to an item that is on the agenda this evening. Consistent with Section 9.5 of the city council handbook, 30 minutes will be initially allocated for public communications for items not on the agenda. Additional time for public communications for items not on the agenda will be provided at the end of the open session portion of the meeting, if necessary. If you decide to provide a public comment, please complete a speaker identification card and line up behind the lectern at the appropriate time. Wait your turn, and then when you approach the lectern, please state your name and city of residence for the record. You will have two minutes to address the city council. Please keep in mind that this is a city council business meeting. The city council has adopted rules of decorum to ensure that the meetings are conducted efficiently and effectively, and that all members of the public have a full, fair, and equal opportunity to be heard. The city council handbook outlines decorum expected in the city council chamber and can be found on our website. All remarks should be addressed to the city council. Please do not use threatening, profane, or abusive language which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the council meeting. Again, each speaker will have two minutes to make your remarks. Written comments submitted and received up to two hours before the meeting have been posted to the city's website for public review and are included in the meeting record, but will not be separately read into the record. Thank you for listening to that, and we are under, let's see. This close session, okay, here we go, sorry. We now start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Francois.
Here.
Councilmember Silva.
Here.
Councilmember Wilk.
Here.
Mayor Protem Darling.
Here.
Mayor Haskew.
Here. Okay. Bear with me. Okay, and we have a proclamation for the National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. So, and let me tell you what that means. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, when an emergency occurs and the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Walnut Creek Emergency Communications Center. Public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. Public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them with information, and ensuring their safety. Public safety telecommunicators of the Walnut Creek Police Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. I therefore, Luela Haskew, mayor of the Walnut Creek, on behalf of the Walnut Creek City Council, do hereby proclaim April 14th through 20th, 24, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in honor of the women and men whose diligence and professionalism keep our city safe, and I believe that Tori Maxfield is. Hi, Tori, how are you? I'm gonna meet you over there, okay? Yes, I bet you have some words that we want to hear. Just a few, please, thank you.
Thank you again for this acknowledgement this year. I always say this is my favorite week of the year, and it really is. It's exciting to be able to acknowledge people that are behind the scenes and often not really at the forefront of emergency services. Our Walnut Creek dispatchers answered about 100,000 phone calls last year, which I think is pretty impressive. And we always exceed the state and national standards for answering the calls in a timely manner, so I appreciate this. It's a very lovely gesture, and thank you.
Thank you. Could you help us for the picture? We're gonna do it by the. I'm finally taller than somebody. However, I'm sitting down. Okay, the next proclamation is for Fair Housing Month, and gotta get the right one. Whereas, April 16th, 2024 marks the 56th anniversary of the passage of Fair Housing Act, which enunciates a national policy of fair housing for all who live in the United States. The Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination based on race, color, sex, religion, gender identity, marital status, sexual orientation, disability, and national origin. California additionally prohibits discrimination based on the usage of Section 8 vouchers and other public assistance and/or subsidies. Fair housing creates a clear benefit to our community. Economic progress, community health, and human relationships in all communities are improved by diversity and integration. Echo Housing is a critical partner to the city of Walnut Creek and continues to promote equal access to housing and supportive services that create permanent housing opportunities for all families, and acts as of housing discrimination and barriers to equal housing opportunity are inconsistent with our values of decency and fairness. I, Luela Haskew, mayor of the city of Walnut Creek, on behalf of our council, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 as Fair Housing Month in the city of Walnut Creek, and affirm the city's commitment to further fair housing and equal housing opportunities for all residents and prospective residents. And I believe that Thomas Ortega is here to get this.
Thank you so much for this. Echo Housing is very proud to be a partner with the city of Walnut Creek in helping folks with their tenant landlord disputes and also in investigating fair housing discrimination. And we look forward to continuing to strengthen the relationship going forward.
Before you go, we're gonna do this a little differently. You and I get to sit here together.
Let's do it. Right here?
Okay, now we have a kind of combination things. We have the Team of the Year and the Employee of the Year for the city of Walnut Creek. Bear with me, these people are very important to our lives and the lives of the community, but they do so many things right, it's gonna take me a half an hour to read them. So, okay, let's start. Matt Redman joined the Public Works Department of the city of Walnut Creek as an associate engineer in 2019. He recognizes that traffic is a concern for local residents. As a resident himself, Matt works tirelessly to make buses run faster, traffic signals run more efficiently, locating parking easier, improvements to the traffic safety, and much more. He is a self-motivator who recognizes a need and makes a new solution selected for. Wait. Matt is a self-motivator who recognized a need and made a new solution selected for the prestigious Pioneer Award from the Federal Highway Administration. He created a technology that can be used across the U.S. by any agent to efficiently monitor traffic safety issues that relate to required maintenance. This is the first time that any city in California was selected for this award, and Caltrans representatives were very happy about the outcome. Matt has made strong contributions to the Wellness Committee and has helped develop new programs. He has encouraged fellow employees to participate in all elements of the wellness program. He has efficiently and effectively worked with the community members to address concerns that span over 40 years. He is working closely with a very active group of residents to improve the quality of their lives by slowing vehicle speeds. Oh, he's the one that put those things on my street. By slowing down the quality of life, by slowing vehicle speeds down with the use of speed cushions. Good job, Matt. Matt has consistently demonstrated the city's core values of respect, integrity, teamwork, excellence, and creativity throughout his career. His commitment to the city organization and the community epitomize these values. The city of Walnut Creek sincerely appreciates the outstanding contributions made by Matt in his career with the city and wishes to pay him special tribute. So, here it is. We're gonna name, on the behalf of the council, on the 16th day of April, do hereby recognize Matt's accomplishment, dedicated efforts, and commitment to the city, and name him the Rosie Kohn Employee of the Year for 2023. Where are you, Matt? You're tall. Thank you for all you do, and city council, this is one of ours, so please come forward for the picture. And just when you thought you could relax, we have the Team of the Year. And the Team of the Year is, well, let's wait a little bit. Post-pandemic, the city of Walnut Creek faced a historically high vacancy rate of over 15% in 2021. In 2023 alone, the Human Resources Recruiting Team performed 44 recruits, resulting in 88 new staff members for the city of Walnut Creek, bringing our vacancy rate down to 9%. The Human Resources Training Team has innovated over the past year by creating vibrant and appealing marketing materials for positions and has focused on identifying key attributes and flexibilities with each recruitment to attract candidates that will become employees committed to excellence and service to the city of Walnut Creek. Recruiting has many unforeseen elements, which starts with collaborating with hiring managers to prepare recruitment plans, creating market materials for positions, designing the best selection methods, and communicating at every step of the way with hiring managers and candidates to reach the point of selection of a new employee. Therefore, the Human Resources Recruiting Team has been a shining example of that kind of team and represents mission, vision, and the values of Walnut Creek with each and every recruitment process. So, you are our Team of the Year of 2023. Would y'all come on down? Okay, do you have any words of wisdom?
Well, thank you. I guess on behalf of the recruiting team, we really appreciate this honor. It means a lot to us. We were really busy, but doing the things that we love, which is finding the best people that we can to serve the community. And it's a wonderful place to be, and I wouldn't say that, you know, even if we weren't winning this award. That's great. Thank you so much.
All right, we're gonna continue with our photographing. Okay. That gets a little more normal. Our next item of the night is the Consent Calendar. Does anybody of the public wish to withdraw, pull an issue for? You wanna pull one?
Yeah, one, just one.
All right, well, let us.
Two C.
Two C, thank you, and I believe we have, yes, item, you said two C?
Yes.
Two G is amended, so we need to remember that, okay?
We did have a card from a member in the public.
Oh, is it here?
On the consent calendar.
Oh, yes, it would be Jan Warren. Would you like to come forward? Jan Warren, sorry, I know your name.
Good evening. Jan Warren, citizen, resident, and longtime supporter of Walnut Creek. I asked for item H to be pulled. I know you have a long agenda tonight, but I couldn't not come down here special to give thanks to the staff, the mayor, and the council, the attorney, everyone who has played a part for at least three years, probably a little more, in helping us work out the kinks and get to the point where we can actually, I hear in May, start putting six cottage homes at Grace Presbyterian Church in Tyce Valley. It's been exciting, and we never lost hope of the goal and who we're gonna be able to help. And six may not sound like a big number, but in 55 years, think of all the people we're gonna help. And it's like, I was thinking today, it's like watching somebody learn to read. And at first, I was thinking kids, but you know, adults can sometimes learn to read if they're in a new country or something, and how exciting that is when you hear them reading. And for people to, I was over with most of you, I think, for the ceremony at Habitat on last Saturday, and it's just so exciting to see people move into a new, safe place to live, and I just wanted to come down and express my gratitude. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Is anybody else gonna come forward? I see movement, but I don't see anybody coming forward, so may I have a motion?
I move to adopt the consent calendar items 2A, B, D through G, as amended at the dais, and H.
Second.
Okay, may I have a roll call vote, please?
We do have a comment card for 2C. Do you want me?
Okay.
Okay, so, Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Francois.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilk.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Darling.
Aye.
Mayor Haskew.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Now we're on to public communications.
Was there a public comment on that?
Is there a public comment on 2C?
Somehow missed this when I was looking it over, but this adoption of the ordinance, amending access to reproductive healthcare facilities of Title IV Public Welfare Morals and Conduct of the Walnut Creek to establish a restriction on the use of sound amplifiers around reproductive. So, you know, I'm opposed to that. The limits on free speech have been steadily worming their way into every institution in our government. At the beginning of the meeting, the whole declaration of all of the requirements on free speech, that's extremely, a good First Amendment lawyer will destroy all of that. So I would recommend you get rid of all of that, because free speech is free speech. And this whole, for, if people have something to say around abortion clinics, they ought to have the right to do that. In 1960, birth control, abortion, pornography, and homosexuality were all legal in America. These are facts. And how they got legalized, the Supreme Court did not have the right to do that, because every society legalizes or legislates morality. This society right now is legislating bad morality. We used to legislate good morality. And so until we restore the good morality that we once had, I think his name is Geisler, he wrote a book called "Legislating Morality." There's a book by Judith Reisman, who's Jewish. She wrote "Sexual Sabotage," describing how the 1948 Kinsey Report destroyed sexual morality in America. That's something that has to be addressed, and fast. Our nation has gone from a 10% out-of-wedlock birth rate in 1940 to 40% today, which is disastrous. No society can outlive that. Unwin in 1934 wrote "Sex and Culture," how no society in human history has ever been able to successfully remove sex from marriage between a man and a woman. So that needs to be considered, because no society, and ours won't either, will do that.
There is one more speaker.
Last one. So, Rand Critton from Lafayette. And with respect to the Measure C, or the reproductive ones, the measure addresses amplified sound. It doesn't address free speech. And amplified sound is, the regulation of amplified sound does not impact free speech. That's what the law says. That's what the city attorney came through. I can tell you that after being there for the last two weeks, after we had our hearing last time, the same words are being said, and the amplification is still going on. And the amplification is going to end. It doesn't mean that they can't say what they are intending to say. And what the last gentleman just said, they can say whatever they want, they just can't use the amplification. We had a video that was sent to you folks showing we have the protesters out there using their microphones with nobody there, except that they're trying to get inside the building and impact the patients and the clients that were helping to be there. So, the amplified sound is not a challenge to free speech. It's a challenge to amplified sound. Thank you.
Any other speakers? Seeing none, Kevin?
Help to speak on it then. Thank you, mayor. And I am very appreciative of the city council and the people that spoke in favor of this item at our previous meeting. This, again, this is not about free speech, as we know. This is about the abuse of amplification of sound. And protesters do have the right for free speech. They just have to stay at least 50 feet away, and they can't use amplified noise, which is, we heard from multiple people a couple of weeks ago, that it can be heard inside the clinic, and it disturbs not just patients, but nurses and doctors. People are coming right now from all over the country because women's rights, reproductive rights, and patient rights are being exploited. And there is unfortunately an attack on these rights happening in many areas of the country right now. I am so proud of this council and the city in taking a stand and in being able to do what we can to protect women and patients in our city. And with that, I heartily recommend and make a motion to pass this item.
And I will second that.
May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Wilk.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Darling.
Aye.
Councilmember Francois.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Mayor Haskew.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item number three is public communications. I would like to remind the members of the public, if you would like to provide a public comment, speaker identification cards need to be completed and turned in to the city clerk. You will have two minutes to address the city council. Please keep in mind, this is a city business meeting. The city has adopted rules of decorum to ensure that the meetings are conducted efficiently and effectively, and that all members of the public have a full and fair and equal opportunity to be heard. The city council handbook outlines decorum expected by the city council and can be found on our website. All remarks should be addressed to the city council. Please do not use threatening, profane, or abusive language which disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of this meeting. If you wish to make a comment, now we have lots of business, lots of cards. Please remember that at this moment, it is 7:30. We have 30 minutes, 6:30, I'm making the day go by faster. We have 30 minutes for these speakers, and any speakers who wish to. Then we go on to the regular part of our meeting. And then at the end of the meeting, anybody who wanted to make a comment is allowed to make the comment at the end of the meeting. So, I've got plenty of cards, so let me call up a couple of people so it doesn't get really dangerous over by the. really dangerous over by the podium. Let's try Carolyn Francois, Andrew Shapiro, Avino Malaya, and Greg Alcaraz. Thank you for coming forward and talking.
Thank you so much. Council, thank you so much for holding this public space as always, and for your service to our city. My name is Caroline Francois. I have been a Walnut Creek resident for my entire life. I'm proud to continue to live and work here, and I am here today to reaffirm and support your prioritization of diversity, equity, and inclusion in our city. I just want to thank you for making that a city priority, and reiterate that there's no place for hate in my city, in our city, and I want everyone to feel welcome and included here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Please state your name.
My name is Andrew Shapiro. I am a resident of Walnut Creek. Madam Mayor and members of the Walnut Creek City Council, my name is Andy Shapiro. I'm here tonight because unfortunately, I think the voice of hatred is also here tonight, and I think it's important for us to be here. I'm here for reasons that I could not have imagined a decade ago. A decade ago before his passing, when my father described for me what it was like to grow up Jewish amid the anti-Semitism of the pre and the post-war period. Back then, I blithely dismissed his warnings, his Jew hatred, and it never goes away. However, he was merely, I thought he was merely channeling the paranoia born out of the traumas that he might have experienced 50 or 60 years ago, which were no longer a concern in these enlightened times. How wrong I am. Hatred of Jews remains lodged in the diseased minds of sick individuals whom, like all bigots, still find it convenient to blame blameless people, be they Jews, Muslims, Chinese Americans, or whomever, for their own failed lives. And it's because of that, because these contorted and demented persons have chosen to use public forums such as this council session to spew their lies, their bile, that I and my co-religionists who are here tonight, sit beside me, have been here tonight. We are here because we need to be here. Jews need to be seen, and unfortunately, we need to be heard. We cannot allow such slander to go unanswered, and we will keep coming back for as long as necessary. My father never shrank from his Jewishness. He served his country through two wars, and on his headstone, below the Star of David, he had inscribed the central tenet of the Jewish people. The Lord is our God, the Lord is one. You see, even in his death, he wanted his Jewishness to be visible. I and these others who are here today for that same purpose, we are Jews. We are proud to be here, and we plan to remain very visible. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
I'm Arvin Malia. Mayor Haskew, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Arvin Malia, and I live at 1045 Alfred Avenue. I've lived in Walnut Creek for 30 years. I thought I'll get a little more than two minutes of the time here. So I've lived in 30 years in Walnut Creek, seven years of utter misery during the last East Bay Mud expansion project. So now they are expanding it again. Thirty-five years with AT&amp;T, now retired, having awarded the highest honors, the S&amp;T Medal for Network Reliability, Network Disaster Preparedness, and Man-made and Natural Disasters. Currently working on the Department of Defense, on a classified project to do with economic, social, telecom, power, water infrastructure, disruption and mitigations. So this East Bay Mud project right now is a disaster in the making. None of the impacts of these expansions are discussed in the EIR. This is a facility located at the top of a hill with only undivided Larky Lane, no sidewalk, T-junction with a stop sign all the way to the freeway. It goes through two schools, churches, homes, and apartments. In case of a fire or earthquake, I think we are trapped. This is basically like Hawaii. There's no other way for us, there's only Larky Lane going up and down to the facility. This is basically a traffic engineer's nightmare. The facility is also located at the top of the hill, they haul chemicals all the time up and down, okay? So, surrounded by an open space, so the only access is again through Larky. And, you know, there have been spills there. I've washed the spills, I photographed that, and also sent it off to Cal EPA, and hopefully they will respond back to me. So anyway, we ask you to include this matter for the next city council meeting. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Greg Alcaraz. I've lived in Walnut Creek for two years, and Contra Costa County for 60 years. We're here tonight as residents and taxpayers of Walnut Creek, and we oppose East Bay Mud's proposed pretreatment plant at the Akalani's Ridge. We want to make you aware of the health and safety of your constituents is being threatened, and we are requesting
Would you?
We are requesting your assistance. Thank you. Some of the health and safety concerns are as follows. During Phase One of the proposed East Bay project, there's a maximum of 136 daily truck trips coming in and out of the neighborhood. There's a maximum of 60 daily workers coming in and out of the neighborhood. Once the project is complete, and at water peak purification, there's estimated to be 42 daily truck trips, removing the solid wastes that come from the cleaning of the water every day. Please note that San Luis Road, which turns into Cano Way, has become a cut-through street and already has significant traffic. The increased traffic due to the East Bay Mud project will overload San Luis Road, additional traffic jams will occur, and increased likelihood of accidents in the neighborhood. There's also potential for spills and leaks of chemicals and other toxic products via the trucks, as well as spills that could occur in the facility. We ask you to agendonize East Bay Mud's proposed pretreatment project at the next city council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, here's the list of people who are coming up next. Katha Flortly?
Hartley.
Hartley, oh, excuse me. And Samantha Francois, and Luz Gomez, and Norman Matloff. Please start.
Hello, my name is Katha Hartley. I have lived in Walnut Creek for nine years, happily. I'm here to thank the Walnut Creek City Council for governing this beautiful city with such care and dignity and respectfully. I want to commend the city council for upholding the Constitution of the United States, especially the First Amendment, by allowing and inviting people to speak here in your meetings. I commend our city council for patiently and respectfully allowing what I consider cowardly, hateful attacks on our Jewish community by people, my guests, who have never lifted a finger to help our community, or to enhance the dignity of the people who live here. I want to thank you for the dignity with which you conduct yourselves and your meeting. Most Walnut Creek citizens understand the great value of our diverse community. I recall from history and my own experience as a young girl in Chicago, where I lived in an Irish Catholic Jewish neighborhood, and we celebrated each other's wonderful holidays, but I remember experiencing the hatred that my best friend Arlie Malkin and her family experienced from people outside who hated Jews. This is 1947, two years after the, we knew everything about the Holocaust. Remember in New York, 1939, 20,000 American Nazis gathered, they were defeated. And I believe that the people of Walnut Creek will defeat any kind of anti-Semitism, any kind of anti-other behavior, erudite or cure, it's cowardly. And certainly, again, I thank the city council for the wonderful work you do. I love the city, I'm so grateful to be here. So thank you for everything that you do.
Mayor Haskew, council, Samantha Francois, Walnut Creek resident, 23 years. Never in my life did I think my city would be subject to racism and hate. Standing with my Jewish friends and neighbors, and anyone who is othered in our community, standing against hate. There are lots of places that need help, lots of places that people, instead of driving here for two hours, could go and volunteer. Instead of driving here and spewing hate for two hours, could go and volunteer. I just don't understand it. We have literally fought a war over this. My great uncle did not sustain an injury at Normandy to see this happen again, and I will not stand by to see this happen again. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Haskew, councilmembers, staff, and community. My name is Luz Gomez, and I serve as the East Bay Mud Ward Two Director. It encompasses Walnut Creek, Lafayette, parts of Pleasant Hill and San Ramon, the town of Danville, and the communities of Alamo, Black Hawk, and Diablo. I'm here tonight to introduce myself to both the council and the Walnut Creek community. I was appointed as the new Ward Two Representative unanimously at the April 9th meeting, just like last week, so I'm brand new. And it's a tremendous honor to be a member of this esteemed board. We settled in Ward Two 40 years ago, my family and I, and we literally fell in love with the water from the first sip we ever took. I had the privilege of visiting Party Reservoir last week, and to see where the pristine water comes from and ends up in our tap, it was an incredible privilege. I want to point out that joining us tonight, we have Dave Rennstrom, who is an engineering manager, and Joe Walker, who's our community of first representatives. So as the newest member of the East Bay Mud Board, I'm eager to ensure that Walnut Creek continues to receive the excellent service and water quality that you have been used to receiving all this time. I'm immersing myself as quickly as I can in all things at East Bay Mud, all the projects that are coming up. I understand that there's a project here in Walnut Creek that you guys are hearing about tonight. I look forward to working with the council and with the community on addressing this and any other project that may come up. I brought with me some cards having to do with our community assistance program. If anybody is having trouble paying for water bills, I'm leaving these at the front. And thank you so much for your service, and I look forward to collaborating and partnering with you. Thank you.
Wait a minute, please.
Thank you very much for being here this evening, and congratulations. I watched the interviews last week, and I truly thought you demonstrated a real understanding of our communities and the issues that we face, whether they're sustainability, or water quality, or the challenges of infrastructure redevelopment and continuing for the future. I think you've already heard this evening that there are some members of the community who live near the water treatment plant up at the top of Larky, who have some concerns. And I assume, since you brought some staff members with you as well, that you are prepared to talk to them outside if they so desire.
Absolutely, yeah.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you, councilmember Silva.
You're welcome. We will also finish with the public comment, and then maybe have the meeting with the people of concern out in the hall then? Would that be?
Yeah, I'll be outside waiting.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
And anybody that wants to can go and talk to her now, please. All right, oh, sorry.
My name is Norman Matloff. I've lived in Walnut Creek for 37 years. We live very close to that East Bay Mud plant. We are not happy, just as the other speakers said. We believe there is a real danger. We believe that there is major, major disruption coming. I don't know if you can imagine it, every single day for three to seven years, trucks coming through our neighborhood, noisy, blocking traffic, dust, fumes, every day, starting at 7:00 AM, not 8, not 9, 7:00 AM, for three to seven years. This is outrageous. We believe there are good alternatives. We do ask that you put this on the agenda for the next meeting. Obviously, we can't legislate that right here, but basically, we want you on our side. I want to make three quick points, four, I think, I'm running out of time. The most important one is this. This is not a neighborhood issue. It affects all of Walnut Creek. Don't dismiss it as a neighborhood issue, which we've already heard from city staff, okay? If up there, up above our houses, there is a disaster, everybody in Walnut Creek is going to feel it. You're not going to have any water. There's not going to be water here in City Hall, okay? Second, why so late? The final EIR is due in June, okay? Well, I'll tell you, most people in our neighborhood don't know. We know that, because we've been canvassing. And everybody we talk to, this is news to them.
Thank you, yes.
All right.
You'll have a chance to talk to
I do agree with the speakers about Jewish. I'm Jewish.
Yes, thank you. Let's see, Emily Chang, Chris Palomo, Craig Devini, and Norman Matloff. Oh, that's Norman Matloff. No, you don't get two chances.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Emily Chang. I am a longtime resident of the city of Walnut Creek, and it's nice to see all the familiar faces here. Some of you may remember me from when I served in the city's transportation commission and when I worked for the Downtown Business Association. I'm proud to be a resident of the city of Walnut Creek. There's a lot to be grateful for. But tonight, I wish to echo the concerns regarding the East Bay Mud project at Akalani's Ridge. In particular, what concerns me are the health and safety aspects. I have two children, and I'm concerned that the asbestos, the debris, and the pollutants will have an adverse impact on their health. Of course, I think the elderly are more at risk as well. We know that the council does not have a vote on this project, and we know about government code 53091, but there is case law establishing significant limitations to the code and thresholds that public entities must meet before claiming the full extent of the code. And even if that weren't the case, what we're asking for tonight will not be in conflict with that code. I'm glad for the chance to perhaps speak with East Bay Mud tonight, and I wish to also request that the council consider funding an independent engineer's report to make sure that the ERI data is accurate. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Chris Palomo, and I'm a field rep of the NorCal Carpenters Union at a local 152 in Martinez, covering all of Contra Costa County. First, I'd like to thank you guys for allowing me to speak tonight. Sorry, my phone just went off. Today, I stand before you to discuss an urgent issue affecting our community in Walnut Creek and the surrounding areas. The exploitation of workers by irresponsible contractors and developers in our local housing projects. These contractors are not only undermining the dignity of our hard-working men and women, but they are also compromising the integrity of our development projects. Many of these unrepresented workers who pour concrete, frame buildings, and build the very structures we live and work in are being denied a level of wage. They work long hours under challenging conditions, yet they struggle to make ends meet for themselves and their families. Furthermore, these contractors often fail to provide essential healthcare benefits, leaving workers vulnerable and unable to afford medical care when they need it most. Compounding these issues is the widespread practice of misclassifying workers. This misclassification strips workers of the rightful benefits and pay rates they should be receiving. These practices are not only unethical, but they erode the quality of our workforce, and ultimately, the quality of our housing developments. It is a disservice to both the workers and the residents of this city who will inhabit these buildings. As leaders of this city, it is your responsibility to ensure that development within our community is both sustainable and ethical. Therefore, I urge you to enact and enforce stringent labor standards that protect our workforce from exploitation and keep developers and contractors honest. Let us be a city that values not just the bricks and mortar of our buildings, but the hands that build them. Let's ensure that our progress as a city does not come at the cost of our workers' welfare and dignity. I'd love to sit and talk with each one of you guys, and talk to you guys about the crime scenes that are going on in all these housing projects. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, Mayor Haskew, councilmembers. My name is Craig Devini. I'm a longtime resident of Walnut Creek, and I'm here with my family tonight. We'd like to address the hate speech that's been, that we've We'd like to address the hate speech that's been, that we've been listening to. We already live in a difficult time. We're facing unprecedented challenges like climate change and overpopulation. We need to be able to find common ground and common truth so that we can start working towards solutions. But in this age of the internet and social media, we are engulfed by misinformation, and instead of thoughtful, rational voices, it is primarily the complainers, the haters, and the most extreme voices that are amplified and propagated. At the same time, politics has become so divisive and extreme, we've lost our middle ground. Sometimes it feels like we're so divided and dissimilar, how will we be able to rise to the challenges of the day? And then in our own city council meetings, the ugliest, most ignorant, toxic members of society stand here at this podium, spewing hate, prejudice, and antisemitism. These speeches are so disheartening, and in combination with everything else going on, could make someone lose faith in humanity. But after witnessing the response from our community, I've left with, I'm left with a very different emotion. I feel hope, optimism, and empowered. I was moved, I am moved, by the outpouring of support from this community. In response to the hate, we've heard messages of love, kindness, and empathy. I'm convinced that when faced with adversity, our better angels will prevail. This terrible thing has entered our community, and as a result, we've only grown closer, found common ground, and emerged from it stronger on the other side. Our goodness, our compassion, our empathy are our strongest emotions, and though we face many challenges, when called to task and faced with adversity, we will rise to meet the challenges of our day. Thank you.
Let's see, Ryan Misano, Geis Darison, and Alyssa Lawson.
What I'm about to say will shock many, and that's because we've all been brainwashed from birth. Time to take your children out of public schools and colleges, throw away your television, stop watching movies, stop listening to the radio, stop reading newspapers and magazines, and get off social media except for gab. Television, radio, and movies have been run by those who follow the Talmud since they were invented. My website is misanonews.com. I also have my own radio show, Ryan Misano Show on Speak Free Radio. So if anyone has a problem, come on my show, I'll listen to you. Let's talk about the Jewish Talmud. If you're a woman, and you're not a Jew, according to the Talmud, you're a whore and a prostitute. And by the way, I've got three million views for Sacramento. Thank you for what you're doing. You're going to bring millions more. If you're a woman and you're not a Jew, according to the Talmud, you're a whore and a prostitute. If you're a man and not a Jew, you're an animal and a beast. The Talmud says the best non-Jews deserve to be killed. It also legalizes child molestation, homosexuality, murder, lying, cheating, stealing, deceit, transgenderism, and much more. Now, we have five victim, or four victim groups in America listed in order. You cannot criticize them. First are Jews, and you could tell. Second, thank you for the demonstration. Second are homosexuals and transgenders, and I see the rainbow flag. Third are non-whites. Fourth are women. The media says white men are racist, but any mistreatment of whites cannot be racist. Of course, the response of Jews when you criticize legitimate Jewish wrongdoing is to holler Holocaust. Now, whether it happened or not is worthy of consideration, but let's give our Jewish friends the benefit of the doubt. If the Holocaust happened, Jewish communism also happened, murdering one hundred million. So why do we constantly hear about the six million alleged victims of a Holocaust, but rarely about the one hundred million murdered by Jewish communism? Because Jews control the money in media, that's why. Talmudic Jew bankers took control of America in 1913 with their bogus Federal Reserve Act and the Sixteenth Amendment, income tax, and Seventeenth Amendment. I'll end there. Thank you.
Please. There were, there was another speaker.
Mayor, city council members, I know you've seen me here before. I'm here for a reason. I'm here to encourage the city workers, as well as people in the community, to carry Narcan. I am currently at, work at Sacramento County Coroner's Office, which is the ME's office, and we've seen a real influx of people coming through there that are very young from fentanyl. And Walnut Creek's a beautiful city, and there's no, you guys really don't have a lot of problems, but drugs are funny. They come under the radar. A lot of people don't think that these homeless people are doing fentanyl, and they don't, they think the normal person, you know, you would think would not do it, but it is a killer, and it's rampant all over the state of California. I encourage your city workers that work for Public Works or any of those departments to carry Narcan. The police carry Narcan. All of you guys need to carry it, because you could save somebody's life, seriously. There's a lot of people going through the ME's office right now that are very young, and it's very sad, and it's because of this problem with fentanyl. So I encourage you people to possibly get the city to take a budget and buy Narcan. It's very inexpensive. You don't need a prescription board, and you could save a human person's life. I would appreciate it if you, in your agendas moving forward, that you could possibly talk to your city workers about it. It's very important. We need to save lives. Too many people are dying. Thank you.
Yes, Alyssa, is that you coming up?
Yes.
Alyssa Lawson, good evening. Walnut Creek resident since 2011. I just moved from an unincorporated area to an incorporated area, and I chose to stay in Walnut Creek because I love this city so much. I hate public speaking. I should, sorry, I should not use that word tonight. I dislike public speaking, but I was motivated because I really am upset about the hate speech that we've been hearing. I just wanted to stand tonight and say that I am in support of a community in Walnut Creek that is inclusive, diverse, equitable, and I appreciate your efforts.
I have another card from Lynn Fanger.
My name is Lynn Fanger. I am Jewish.
Lynn, would you move the microphone so it's near your mouth?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, my name is Lynn Fanger. I am Jewish, and I reside in the La Mirinda area, and I'm almost in Walnut Creek every single day. I thank the Walnut Creek Council for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight and appreciate all the work that you have done to help with all these horrible remarks, anti-Semitic remarks. Yes, we do have freedom of speech, but with that said, in my opinion, freedom of speech comes with responsibility. I am speaking for, on behalf of all the people who are not here tonight to speak up against this disgusting and hateful rhetoric against the Jewish people. This is not to be accepted or tolerated in this community. Antisemitism is not new. This trope does not define who we are, nor does it threaten us. It is unnecessary harassment by a stupid group of people. We do take this seriously because we are a minority and the highest targeted religious group. This is a call-out to stop all kinds of racial hate. So please, whoever you are, keep your comments to yourself. Thank you.
Anybody else? We have one minute left for public comment. Yes? Don't forget to fill out a card before you go home.
Hi, my name is Erica Beth Dahl. Go ahead and record me, because you've recorded everyone else, and I just want to say that, you know, I live in Concord, but I lived in the Bay Area, Alamo, Walnut Creek for many years. And I was horrified when I found out what happened specifically, I guess it was in February, to a wonderful man and council member, Mr. Wilk, who I had an honor to meet the other day. And I am here to say that I will be here, and others in our community who will continue to stand up to this vile display that does not represent who we are as a community. Regardless of me living in Concord, I feel this is my home too, and we are all community members together. And just one last thing I want to add. There's some heavy research that's being done by some of my colleagues who are working on this effort and on other efforts jointly, and come to find out that members such as the man who stood up before to make a spectacle, they actually make money off of doing this by GoFundMe sources on the dark web. I'm not being interrupted. I am letting you know that that is actually true, and we have receipts to show that, and maybe my next time I come to speak, I'll talk more about how, when the videotaping goes on for themselves and for others, they make money off that on the dark web.
All right, it is the end of public comment. I have a comment to make. Every council member has taken an oath to follow the Constitution, including honoring the First Amendment rights afforded to us all. Nevertheless, the speech today, full of threats and inappropriate language, in my opinion, borders on yelling fire in a darkened theater. While under the letter of the law, you may have the right to be disruptive, disrespectful, and dreadful to listen to, but we have the right and obligation to vehemently disagree with your comments and choose not to be bullied, and instead focus on communications that improve and bring progress to our city. To be clear, the council strongly disagrees with and condemns your comments. Thank you all for showing up, and I have, Kevin, please.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor, and I appreciate those comments, as does the entire community, Jewish, Muslim, Black, LGBTQ, everybody. Some things that I have privy to that other people may not is the amount of feedback and comments and emails, and people that just stopped me in the street or in meetings telling me how thankful they are to live in Walnut Creek, how welcoming it is, thank you to the city council for doing the things that we have done to make people feel more welcome, and for also speaking out against the hate speech that we've heard. While we've heard from a couple of terrible individuals over, you know, the last couple of months, we've heard from hundreds and hundreds of people, both in the public sphere, as well as just in the last few meetings who have shown up. We've heard from dozens of speakers, many of them not Jewish, many that are ministers that are Catholic and Christian, Episcopalian, and a variety of different people that say these are, these people align themselves with white Christianity. No, we rebuke what they're saying. Some of the comments that we've heard, that these haters are not just divisive, which we know they are, they're ugly, toxic, disgusting, ignorant, hatred. These are just some of the words that we've heard tonight, and there's many more that have happened over the last few weeks. As a community, it heartens me to see this kind of support and outreach that we've heard from the community. Many people who have spoken, I can hear it in your voices, many people who have spoken, they're not comfortable with public speaking. This may be one of the first times they've spoken in a long time, maybe ever, in this kind of a forum. We've all become used to it, but it's a real challenge if we think about what it was like the first time we ever had to speak up in class, or the first time in front of a large group of people. It can be intimidating, and it's nerve-wracking, and these people have gotten up and out on a Tuesday night to come to Walnut Creek to a electrifying city council meeting, to be able to speak their truth and what it means to them. And I thank you for that, because I think that that's important, because as we've heard from many people along the way, including Winston Churchill Hall quote on this, saying that evil exists where good people say and do nothing. It's not that the opposite of love, or the opposite of hate is love. The opposite of hate is indifference, and we have to show that. We have to show how important it is for us to stand up. All the people that have spoken tonight, and all the people that have spoken to me in the last couple of months are all from a five-mile radius. The two specific haters and dividers that have spoken in Walnut Creek at our city council meetings the last two months have come from Stockton and Modesto, maybe Sacramento, I'm not quite sure, it's, those two. They've had to come from at least an hour, an hour and a half away to spread their vile hatred here. And we have shown that we are better than that as people, that we are better than that as humanity, and I thank God every day that I live in Walnut Creek and that we are a community that accepts and loves one another, and I thank everybody for being here. I thank people that are watching, and I thank everybody in the community for being as welcoming as you are.
All right, whoa, 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 we don't, I'm sorry, I was, I was otherwise occupied. We don't clap in this, that is not appropriate. I guess you can do that. This is a business meeting, and we intend to run it like a business meeting. And that being said, public comment is closed, and we're... Can I get, staff, just get some information on, we have some neighbors in one area near the East Bay Mud Water Treatment Plant, and could we get clarification on why we are not taking this up at the city council level and what our level of authority is? In, in English, not lawyer-y, please.
I can provide some thoughts for the council. So the city is under, by state law, does not have jurisdiction over this project as East Bay Mud's facility is a water treatment facility, and by state law, as one of the speakers mentioned, under the government code, and by Attorney General's opinion conclusion that it does not have jurisdiction over that project, and as, is, East Bay Mud is the agency that's undertaking the project. It is also the lead agency on the environmental document, so it has the responsibility to approve, prepare, review, and certify the environmental impact report. The city can comment on that report, and the city has done that prior to the public comment period closing, and so, you know, the city has taken steps to review and respond to that comment on that environmental analysis. But otherwise, the city is not, it's not within the city's jurisdiction to issue a permit, CUP, or building permit, or otherwise.
Thank you. Any other comments before we move on to the next item? Seeing none, we are up to, I'm looking to the, closed session, thank you. I started to say that. Closed session announcements, are there any?
No announcements, mayor.
Thank you. City manager reports, and in case you noticed, this is not Dan Buckshai, this is Kevin Saffin, who, who now kind of is also in charge of Arts and Rec Department, and before he opens his mouth, I'm going to, I'm going to bring the local news Sunday paper where there is a giant headline saying Arts and Rec Expanding Its Adaptive Inclusion Programs, and two people who are very active in making that happen are here, one of which is Kevin Saffin, our substitute city manager. So, thank you, and Ms. Orkot, who also has been a mover and shaker in this whole thing. Now, city manager report.
Thank you, mayor. I was just going to say what you already said, which is, I am not Dan Buckshai. The city manager's out of town this week. He will return, scheduled to return on Thursday, so I'm your acting city manager, and then I'm also presenting an item later, so you will see me over at the lectern a little bit later, and then coming back here. So I'll be on the move, but I just want to share that with you in the audience that I'm city manager Buckshai, will return on Thursday. Thank you.
Anybody on council would like to take, take wing here? Matt, would you please?
Thank you, mayor. This morning, I had the pleasure of attending the State of the Chamber Talk over at the Oakview Room at the library, where we were able to hear an update on the chamber's strategic plan and also celebrate outgoing Chair Audrey G., and welcome back incoming Chair Matt Gouchard. We had an interesting report from Visit Walnut Creek, that's our visitor bureau, Visitor and Tourism Bureau, and they had interesting statistics in terms of the economic development that happened as a result of a half marathon run that was scheduled in early March. I was signed up to run that race, and unfortunately, it got canceled due to weather conditions on Mount Diablo. But there, everyone was already in town for the race, and they had some good numbers that that one race, over that two-day event, garnered something along three-quarters of a million dollars in economic development for the region. of a million dollars in economic development for the region. So great news in terms of sports, tourism, and more to come on that. We also, at that event, celebrated legacy members of the chamber, meaning they had been members of the chamber for 50 years or more. I think that's right. Including Cal Shakes, Diablo Valley College, and CSAA Insurance Group. So thank you to them for being such valued business partners and members for many, many years. Then this, earlier this afternoon, along with the mayor, I attended the Public Education Committee meeting. And we had an update on the Seat at the Table Initiative, which is for our, an initiative our Youth Leadership Commission brought to us two years ago now and asked us to do a pilot program where three youth members serve on our arts, transportation, and park, recreation, and open space. So those youth members now have served almost two years and have done a really fantastic job. I watched one of them in action at, at the Prose Commission meeting and she was prepared and she had great comments and really contributed to the dialogue. So this will be a future council agenda item where we'll talk about the future of, of that program since it was a pilot program. And I believe that's coming back to our, it'll come on our May agenda. And then finally, I attended the East, the Economic Development Working Group Committee of the chamber's meeting last week, where we had another report from the Diablo Valley Tech Initiative, which is a group of business folks, city folks, entrepreneurs up and down the 680 corridor who are trying to promote and garner new interest in development in tech and economic development within that region. And their first, their main, first initiative now, or one of their major initiatives, is gathering data on the industries that are here, the industries that we would like to hear, to be here, our employment base, so that we can make strategic decisions going forward in terms of trying to be attractive places for new businesses. We also talked about the city's Economic Development Action Plan, which I know we'll get an update on at our next, or one of our future council meetings. The Shadelands Rebranding Project, which we're all familiar with. And then scheduling of a technical advisory panel with the Urban Land Institute, which is actually part of our Economic Development Action Plan. There are a lot of words in all those words. And that will be a focused study by the Urban Land Institute in conjunction with kind of our business partners here, focused on healthcare and the future of healthcare in, not just in Walnut Creek, but in our region and how we can be well positioned to be an attractive place for additional healthcare development. And I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to just roll right up.
I guess that's me then. A few things that happened in the last couple of weeks. One is that as the representative for County Connection, Contra Costa County Transit Authority, wanted to mention a couple of things. One is that there's a Senate Bill 1031, I know that our mayor must be familiar with, being on CCTA, which is essentially that there is a bill that it's a, it's Weiner, what, Wahab, yeah, Weiner Wahab, that is looking to consolidate all the transit agencies that are under, under one umbrella, basically have it one large bus system, which would not be efficient. Sounds efficient, it's actually not when you get into the weeds of it. Bart is not supporting it, just wanted to put that out there. I was part of the group that went to Washington DC last week to meet with our legislators, several different Congress members, DeSaulier, Eric Swalwell, Guerra Mendy, talking about the grant funding that we're looking to hopefully continue to have the federal support on. There's a lot of different clean energy initiatives that we're working on when it comes to public transit, including electrification of buses, but also hydrogen fuel cells. And there's a large cost for infrastructure in that, but it's a cheaper cost afterwards. So there'll be more to come on that, but that grant funding, of course, is always going to be necessary to be able to get, get the bus rolling, so to speak. I did want to mention that there's the Bedford Gallery opening that I was at this last weekend, rediscovering Native America. And I've got, to be honest, I just don't know that much about the Native American culture. You know, it's interesting. I think in fifth grade they teach that. But oddly enough, I've been around the world and I haven't really, I don't think I've ever even been to a reservation in America. And seeing all these art that's there at the Bedford Gallery really makes me want to go out of my way and get to a reservation, can really see what's going on there as well. But it's fascinating. So I definitely recommend visiting that while it's still open. I had the opportunity yesterday to meet some of the most enthusiastic people I have ever met in my life. I spoke at the Tice Valley School first grade class. And there is nothing like seven-year-olds that want to ask every question of the sun. And it wasn't just about, hi, who I am. It was more about they're looking to try to be, have first grade involvement in their student council and they wanted to ask a council member, how can they make that argument and why is it important to be part of the decision-making process? So I was happy to have that conversation. And the first time in my life that I ever said, I've been a representative of yours in Walnut Creek for your entire life. I haven't had that opportunity before. And then we have the Cal Cities Leaders Summit in Sacramento this week. I believe a couple of my council members are going with me on that one. And this Saturday is Earth Day. It, Walnut Creek is celebrating that in Civic Park. A few of us are speaking at that. It starts at 11 o'clock. Not sure when it goes until, is it three? It's two or three, but come at 11. That's my report.
Thank you very much. Just to build on what you said about the Bedford Gallery exhibit, it is a photography exhibit. It is beautiful and it's running through June 23rd. So you have a few weeks to get in there because you could spend two to three hours just studying and reading the placards on each of these photographs. And it really is reflective of all of, I would say, west of the Mississippi River. So you can see people who are from tribes out of, the Lakota tribes out of the Dakotas and the Colorado and New Mexico and Arizona and the Pacific Northwest. So it's really interesting and really informative and beautiful photography. So check it out. Councilmember Francois and I represent this council on the Board of the Central Contra Costa Solid Waste Authority, which is euphemistically known as Recycle Smart. We take care of the trash, the recycling, and the organic waste. The subcommittee of that is looking at various pieces of legislation that are running through Sacramento right now, looking to take positions on these bills. One of the bills in particular that we're particularly supportive of would create expanded markets where our communities could acquire their required compostable products, organic waste. We have a big requirement as a community to basically purchase and use mulch that has been through the organics processing. And so they're, we're very supportive of that. Also, what's happening is there are a number of pieces of legislation that in an attempt to reduce waste are really seeking to make the producers or the manufacturers of products that are difficult to dispose of, to be responsible for the end of life. And that would include not only mattresses and textiles, but also things like EV charging batteries and photovoltaic cells, all of which end up just in our landfills with good uses during their life. But then it's how do you properly dispose of those and not have them in the landfills? I will mention that the Association of Bay Area Governments Executive Committee is meeting this Thursday evening. I'm a member of that board. And we will be having a robust conversation about the possibility of putting an affordable housing bond package on the ballot in November 2024. This would be for the nine counties and it would generate billions of dollars to reinvest in affordable housing across the nine counties. So stay tuned for more information on that. And I would mention that I attended the annual fundraiser for the California Symphony on Saturday evening and I really want to congratulate them for working to generate funds to support the work of the California Symphony, who is a phenomenal professional orchestra with one of its homes here in Walnut Creek at the Leisure Center. And I think the next performance is focused on Brahms, because I saw that card in the mail. And finally, I will mention that Community Service Day is October 12th. That's a Saturday, 2024. And the recruitment project for projects. So we first have to find local groups to sponsor projects. And then we turn around and now, once we get a catalog of projects, then we turn around and recruit volunteers. So we're looking for nonprofit schools, other public agencies, sports teams, service clubs, and the city, of course, to create projects for this year. Again, Saturday, October 12th. Be sure to mark your calendars. Thank you, Mayor, very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. So I won't repeat, the Bedford Gallery smashing exhibit, State of the Chamber, interesting, lots of data. I did want to talk about the mayor and I, and I think Councilmember Silva showed up for the Habitat for Humanity, we got to welcome some of the new families. Oh, and Kevin was there too. Yeah. You weren't there. Yeah. I know, you were, I, okay. You, I was in yourself.
And I was way in the back and she noticed me from a distance.
Well, you had a bright colored raincoat on and it was a very cold day. But we got to meet a bunch of the families that are moving in. They've all worked a couple hundred hours on their homes and they are, as a group, super excited about moving to Walnut Creek. There were two of them that were coming from San Leandro and they met because they were walking around their neighborhood and one of them had a Habitat hat. And they figured out that they were going to be neighbors and they were super excited to be here. I also, I miss the regular groundbreaking or ribbon cutting ceremony for the John Muir Cancer Center because my husband and I were off hiking in Patagonia. And so Sharon Jenkins from John Muir came back and said, well, you know, for you two, we'd give us a personal tour. So we got the personal Sharon Jenkins tour of the new cancer facility. And it was just really great how much they thought about the patients and the families and the care that they were giving to them as they came up with that center. And last but not least, because this person was not at, the Walnut Creek Library Foundation Authors Gala has a spring reception for the sponsors. And this year, like always, we have it at, up at Teleferic, graciously hosted by Brian Harahara. And I just, he was not there that night. And I just wanted to say thank you for inviting us all and entertaining us in grand style. It was a great kickoff to the library fundraiser, which is coming up in two weeks. And now I will turn it over to the mayor to explain what a loella is.
Okay. Well, I wasn't going to start with that, but it was in this very seat I stood up when they were looking at building the plan, the Habitat for Humanity houses, there was a little problem of five feet to, and a conflict with our ordinances. And we went round and round and round and round and the neighbors were not happy because there was going to be this new development in the thing and they were using that as an excuse. And so it was from this very chair that I stood up and I said, I am five feet tall and you can know how little that is because you can see I'm almost the same height as everybody sitting down. So I said, let's not call it five feet. Let's call it a loella. And I think after that, the vote was made and the houses were built and it's all very well. I did ask to have it, my name put on at least one building because I, I had an impact. Seriously, I also am on CCTA and I had the Planning Commission and we spent some time talking about increasing ferry service up and down from Richmond to Hercules to farther in, in, down the river and what it could be and what it would look like and how much it would cost. Also related to Contra Costa Transportation Authority, I'm on the Innovate 680 program and they spent a lot of time talking about timing when you're getting on a freeway and those annoying red lights. They figured out how to use them very efficiently and there's new technology and they will be going in. And the third of my transportation jobs is Transpac. And that's the local five-city group who comes up and we decide how to spend Measure J. money, which is a half cent sales tax that was, that we pay for because we voted it in. Anyhow, that, that we heard, the second half of the applicants for getting accessible transportation funding so that they can, they can move people who have challenges, who are old or, and some of them are volunteers and some of them are recognized bus transportation. So we have the job of figuring out how to allocate our money. I got to be on the Diablo Regional Arts Board and I went to their board meeting on Monday, yesterday. And they've got some pretty exciting things. Of course, they have their annual fundraiser, but they're also going to be doing a lot of things about spreading culture around the community. And they have a floating, well, floating, it's a truck that, that drives around and, and there can be performances at schools and other places so that we can reach out. And then they have their giant fundraiser in the fall. We, we presented some awards for our employee recognition, but I also want to say that we recognized people who have been with our commute, our, our staff from five years to 25 years. And it was impressive and it warms my heart how really dedicated our staff is at delivering services and taking care of our community. So I believe that's it. And I have had an indication that somebody would like to take a 10-minute break. So before we get on to the next two items, we will take a 10-minute break. I'll see you back here at 7:35.
Thank you, and welcome back to our city council meeting. And the next item on the agenda is, I need to turn my page. Put my glasses on my face. The approval of the assessment reports and annual levy of assessments for the Downtown Walnut Creek Business Improvement District bid and the Downtown Walnut South Business Improvement District S bid for fiscal year 2425 and setting the public hearings. Hi.
Good evening.
Would you tell me who you are?
Good evening, Audoral Mayor and City Council, Angela Sway, Economic Development Manager. Tonight's item, 5A, is the annual renewal of the Downtown Bid and S Bid. The Downtown Walnut Creek Bid has been in place since 2005, and the South Bid since 2010. The Bid and S Bid are managed by Walnut Creek Downtown, which plays a key role in promoting and preserving the downtown as a vibrant and successful destination through its events, marketing, and beautification efforts. As a reminder, in 2022, your city council adopted an automatic annual increase of 3% to the assessment amount each fiscal year beginning July 1st of 2023, and at this time, there is no additional increase being proposed above the 3%. The annual Bid and S Bid assessment renewal is a two-step process. The first meeting is tonight with a presentation from WCD, and the second meeting is the public hearing. And now I'd like to introduce Kathy Hemmenway, the Executive Director of WCD, to give a brief presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Haskell, and city council members. I'm Kathy Hemmenway, Executive Director with the Walnut Creek Downtown Association. I'm here tonight to share the organization's annual report for fiscal year 2023-24, looking forward to and ahead to fiscal year 2425. The Walnut Creek Downtown Association is a nonprofit made up of 680 downtown businesses. The map here shows our district boundaries, and the bid and the South Bid encompass 29 blocks of the downtown. Walnut Creek Downtown leverages the bid assessments to, the bid assessment fees to increase the visibility and vitality of the downtown. And these funds, together with sponsorship, support, and event revenue, pay for a wide range of projects and activations. And Walnut Creek Downtown Association acts as an advocate on behalf of our business members through beautification projects, special event production, coordinating, marketing, and professional development opportunities for our business members and member advocacy. This is a list of our Board of Directors and current staff members. Our Board Directors participate in a variety of committees as well to help engage with their constituents through programming and, their constituents' programming and staff. And our staff currently consists of three full-time members and then three part-time employees, and we just recently welcomed a part-time intern from DVC. So Stephen Doe now has joined our team. Our member advocacy efforts are accomplished through a variety of ways that are listed here. A couple of these items to note include the development of a vision plan that we've been talking about. We're just about to sign, hopefully, with an agency to assist with creating a vision plan that will create goals and tangible tasks to enhance the downtown business district and the organization through focus groups, memberships, and resident outreach. And then another item of note is that Walnut Creek Downtown has a, is a member of the California Downtown Association and the International Downtown Association. So both membership organizations provide programming, organizational, and networking benefits for our staff to connect with professional place management leaders throughout the world. So I personally sit on the CDA Board of Directors and recently participated in a lobby day up in Sacramento, where we attended the Downtown Recovery Committee hearing, followed by meetings with state senators and assembly members discussing topics such as retail theft, clean and safe, and entertainment zones, all while representing the priorities of the downtown business community. And these are examples of our community programs that are occurring for one-to-six-month timeframes. The Downtown Stages, arts around August, Painted Pianos, we've got Painted Pianos, actually, will be, a new set has been delivered, as you may see, will be painted this Sunday. So more to come for the '24 season. And then I'd like to highlight two programs funded by the Measure O Sales Tax Initiative. Additional programs that we've managed throughout the year include the inaugural year of holiday decorations throughout the downtown. So those, those efforts were funded by Measure O to help brighten the downtown with seasonal decorations and lights. And then another project is the Big Belly Wraps. So we've been working with the city's public art manager and the Bedford Gallery staff on this project, which will install artistic images onto over 50 Big Belly units within the downtown. So we'll soon be conducting a public artist call and plan to complete this project in early summer. And annual programs that include, our annual programs include business networking and annual public events. The very popular Walnut Creek on Court will take place again in June this year, and then also the Broadway Plaza Summer Concert Series are always a very popular program that takes place in August. These are highlights of our late summer and fall events. And this past year, we had the return of Oktoberfest to Civic Park East, which welcomed over 12,000 guests. A winter highlight was the return of the Civic Park Holiday Tree Lighting Ceremony, which was attended by over 200 guests. And the return of Walnut Creek on Ice for its 19th season welcomed 23,000 skaters, and a new rink-side experience with fire pits that was added to continue the, to enhance the visitor experience. This is a snapshot of this year's marketing statistics. And in addition to a very successful digital campaign in 2023, we coordinated co-op ads providing special rates for downtown business members to advertise in Diablo's weekly A-list, and then we also created a co-op ad for the East Bay Women's Conference, featuring eight downtown restaurants promoted to all attendees before and during the program. And this slide shows, moving into our financial review, this slide shows the final budget for fiscal year 2023-24 and the projected budget for '24-25. You'll note there is a small deficit for this past fiscal year, however, our current savings can cover that amount. So I wanted to point out, too, with the next couple of slides, they will include the past year's comparison using numbers from '22-'23. So currently, our AR total for the fiscal year '23-24 is approximately $11,000, just kind of take that into account. And a couple of notes on this table. The reimbursements portion includes items that were purchased in advance by Walnut Creek Downtown, with the largest expense being the holiday decorations for this year. And overall, '23-24 performed better than the previous year in almost every category. And the continued success of large-scale events have required an increase in event supplies, professional services, and rental equipment, so you'll see a bit of a jump there. Alternatively, our team is currently receiving bids to, for equipment rentals to identify one vendor to supply all of our events. And the need for contract labor and volunteers also grew to assist with the larger programming, and this, part of this need was filled through a partnership with the Trinity Center, providing employment for some of their, their members. And our streaming, we're streamlining administrative costs and staff roles that has begun this year to address rising expenses, and now that we see that our programs are, our programs are stabilizing post-pandemic, and the positive trend that we're also seeing is a significant increase in revenue from our ticket sales, sponsorships, which have provided some revenue growth to help offset our increasing operating expenses. So our programs for the year continue to see a positive growth in, for Oktoberfest, Walnut Creek on Ice, and First Wednesday, and again, because of the sponsorship support and guest confidence, which has continued to slowly come back post-pandemic. I've listed a few highlights here for the proposed '24-25 budget. The assessment review is projected to be $303,000, $100,000, resulting in a net income of approximately $273,000. And, and we anticipate maintaining general marketing and payroll expenses in the year ahead, after we've invested in these areas over the last two years, as we've been rebounding from the pandemic. This is just a table of the assessment fees reflecting the 3% increase. And then we are excited to share a full slate of programs for 2024, bringing thousands of visitors to the downtown. And due to popular demand, we'll see two First Wednesdays that'll occur in 2024. Last year's event was a great success, and we're going to be hosting the first event on May 1st, and then the second on August 7th. We'll be bringing this program to Locust Street, so expanding that beyond our Cypress Street footprint, which was definitely busting at the seams last year. So we're hoping for a cooler day, because last year was beyond, and we're excited to be able to work with the city on Locust Street as they're wrapping up construction. We're going to be taking over Locust Street for a little bit to bring some fun to that, that street. Oktoberfest, this lists a, some efforts to update and fine-tune this year's program, which is scheduled for September 27th and 28th. And the 2024 season, event season kicked off with the Spring Fling, which many of you may have either attended or seen, had seen many kids running through the downtown. So we co-hosted with the Walnut Creek Education Foundation, and they were, are celebrating their 40th anniversary year, and they asked us to assist with bringing back one of their more popular events. Kids of all ages participated, families participated by performing in choral groups and bands, sharing their artwork on city sidewalks, volunteering as guides and as event support. Oops, sorry, I want to go back real quick and address Summer Arts in Walnut Creek. We're going to be tweaking arts around August to include a three-month program, or expand to a three-month program. So all the arts programs occurring between June and August will be showcased as a rebranded program called Summer Arts Walnut Creek. Where we'll be, the marketing guidelines will be sent to all of our partners to implement within their own collateral. We're featuring a new logo that should be done within the week. And then program dates and information will all be uploaded to our website calendar to be, again, used as a main resource for information. And then our staff will be assisting with the marketing coordination, and the Arts Alliance Group has decided to move beyond employing a coordinator. So our team will be dividing up those duties. And then the ice rink, real quick, will be back for, hopefully, a little bit longer season. We are reviewing some alternative, a few items that we hope to expand the, to the venue, which includes beer and wine service and potentially a new the venue, which includes beer and wine service and potentially a new features for our younger, even younger kids to enjoy. So more to come on that. I did want to note that we will not be hosting the Spooktacular Trick or Treat Event this year. Our, the last couple of years, our team has partnered with the Arts and Rec staff to produce the Boobash Halloween event, and it's become one huge event within the downtown. And while the trunk-or-treat event in Civic Park continues to grow and thrive, excuse me, we've all made the decision to discontinue producing the Spooktacular Stroll, which goes throughout the businesses. We found that a six-hour Halloween event within the downtown just wasn't as effective as the three-hour event within the park that also accommodates three to four times the amount of people. So while this, this decision does eliminate a, one of our longstanding programs, we are definitely committed to supporting the Arts and Rec Department with promoting their, or supporting the Arts and Rec Department with promoting their program and engaging downtown businesses, so they can still have a place at the trunk-or-treat. And then a new effort in 2024 is to create a 501(c)(3). The Community Partnership for Walnut Creek Downtown is going to be a new endeavor for our organization. Its mesh, its mission is to develop, support and promote artistic, cultural and public events that benefit businesses, individuals and stakeholders within the service area of downtown Walnut Creek. An application is in process, and we will keep you posted on the developments of that new endeavor. And overall, we are continuing to streamline our efforts, our administrative and marketing programs, which now are resulting in a savings of approximately $10,000. One of the efforts we have been able to identify is upgrading our, our website, and we'll be able to provide more services and engagement to our downtown businesses. So that concludes my presentation, and thank you very much for your time and support, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions? Ah.
I just have one question. I might have missed it, but was a movable feast on there?
No, we are not going to return with movable feast. We saw a very, a big dip.
Drop-off?
Yeah, yeah.
Darn.
And it had a couple, a couple different things between the school, calendar changing, and I just think that there was just a lot going on in August, which is great, but we have our efforts that are going to be concentrated elsewhere.
Okay.
But we appreciate all of the council members that led each of those evenings. They were very popular in that respect.
Thanks, Kathy.
I'm not seeing any other questions. So let's bring it back to public comment. Or, yes, is there any public comment at this moment on this topic? So we do, I'm bringing it back to council, and we do have some actions that we are expected to take, and that would be the resolutions that are outlined in our agenda report. So who would like to embrace what the job is?
I would like to move to approve the resolutions, approving the Downtown Walnut Creek Business Improvement District quote-unquote bid, annual assessment report for fiscal years 2023, 2025. Also, the adopt the resolution approving the Downtown Walnut Creek South Business Improvement District SBID annual assessment report for fiscal years 2023 to 2025. Adopt the resolution of intention to levy assessments for fiscal year 2024 and 2025 for the bid, and set a public hearing for May 7th, 2024. And adopt the resolution for implementation to levy assessments for the fiscal year 2024 to 2025 for the S-bid, and set a public hearing also for May 7th, 2024.
Second. Thank you. May I have a roll call vote?
Mayor Protem Darlene.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Francois.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilk.
Aye.
Mayor Haskew.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
And we are all so happy that downtown is coming back from COVID.
That finishes that, and we're on to the next item, which is the New Aquatic and Community Center at Heather Farm Park, action on aquatic sustainability and essential services options.
Good evening, Mayor Haskew and members of the City Council. My name is Janine Cavalli. I'm a senior planner here at the City of Walnut Creek, and I'm very much looking forward to presenting to you this evening on the New Aquatic and Community Center at Heather Farm Park. I am joined by other members of our project team, including both staff and consultants who will be presenting alongside me this evening, as well as be available to answer your questions. And this is the third in a series of meetings to present the schematic design presentation package for the new facility. And tonight's meeting purpose is to seek direction from City Council on options for aquatics features, sustainability features, and essential services features for the new facility. And once we have that direction, we'll be able to move forward with the next phase, which is the design development phase, and that takes us into a little bit more detail design and coming back to you with materials palette, landscape palette, and more. So the City Council action requested is to approve the recommended modifications to the optional items for those three topics I just listed, aquatics, sustainability and essential services. And I'm not going to read all the details just yet. We'll get into more of the details for each of these three topics a little bit further into the, the presentation. So the outline for this evening is, I'll start with a few slides on the project background, then I'll hand it over to some other members of our team to present more of the details on those three different areas I just identified. And then what we're going to do is, we're going to take, we're going to present one at a time, and then take council questions after each topic area is presented. Then I'll come back, kind of wrap up next steps, and if there's more council questions, we're happy to take those again. And then we'll move on to our usual order of things, the public comments, and then concluding with the council deliberation and direction. So first, the project background. You know, this project started a number of years ago, 2018, with the year Parks for Future, where we were looking at arts and recreation programming and did a facility analysis, not just for Heather Farm, but for Civic Park and Shadlands as well. We are now in the phase of the project, in the New Aquatic and Community Center Facility at Heather Farm Park project, and we're in the design and construction phase of that project, currently with the schematic design presentation package. And as I just mentioned, we'll be coming back with what's known as the design development phase, which is again, a little bit more further fleshed-out design. And that'll take us through April 2025, and then we'll begin construction of the new facility in summer of 2025, and that'll take just over two years to complete. So this slide shows the key project assumptions and principles that were adopted by City Council in September of 2023, namely to replace the existing community center and aquatic building with a new facility located at the existing community center site. And that would be replacing three pools with a lap pool and a recreational pool, and that our recommendations would be realistic, implementable and budget-conscious. So we presented the first of these three meetings of the schematic design presentation package back in February, and the council preferred, of the two schemes that were presented, council preferred Scheme A, and some of the elements of that was, that was the plan with the more angled floor plan. It provided a little bit more of outdoor space at the event garden site, and also had a better presence and orientation towards the pond. And this is a, an illustration of that scheme preferred by council, and the design team are working on adjustments to the roof design based on the council comments from that meeting. We had a second meeting on March 5th, where we presented the aquatics portion of, of the facility, and we will, we've updated our recommendation, and we'll be presenting that shortly to you this evening. There are three outstanding items for which we're seeking City Council direction tonight. One is on the aquatics portion, and I, as I just mentioned, we'll be presenting to you an updated design. In addition to aquatics, there's two other areas. Sustainability will be presenting you with you, presenting to you a menu of sustainability feature options. And similarly, for essential services, we'll be presenting a menu of, of options with a recommendation for each. And we're seeking council direction on each of these, and once we have that direction, we're able to move to the next phase of the project. So Kevin Safin is going to present the first of those three items, the aquatics.
It was someone who looked just like me over there. I thank you, Janine, for the record. Kevin Safin, Director of Arts and Recreation on this side. It's my pleasure to be here for lots of reasons, not just to present to you, but because this is a culmination of a project that some of us in this room have been working on for over 15 years, and it's to the credit of many people who are here and who came before us for all the hard work they did. So it's a great time to be celebrating the work that we're about to discuss. So aquatics. When we last left off on this topic, a discussion filled with a lot of detail, a lot of comments, a lot of puns, but good work and good feedback that we got from the council. And so, city team presented to you a very detailed schematic package of aquatics pools, pool deck, pool facilities. You all received a lot of inputs from the public, heartfelt, and staff, and council took that seriously. So the direction that you provided to us was to go back and do a little bit more work with the Walnut Creek Aquatic Foundation, WCAF, on how a revised design could potentially better serve the needs of all of the programs, not just the swim teams, but all of the programs in the community. And you were very clear that changes, I'm going to read this, changes to design need to maintain a balance of programming opportunities, and those design changes are not intended to support new revenue, revenue generating events, not intended. It could be that they support that, but that's not our intent. And so, staff did that, and so we are proud to present to you what we did and how we did it. And so I'll come back to this slide if you'd like. I'm going to cover this information a few times this evening, so I'm not going to go into detail here, but I'm happy to come back to this. In sum, the changes that we made to the design on March 5th are to the 50-meter pool, to the recreational pool, and to the pool building, the bathhouse. To the recreational pool, there was the most of it, but I'll start at the 50-meter pool. The biggest change there is that we heard from the community that the design that we had at that time, March 5th, had a hybrid of wayne, of lane widths, some eight feet, some seven feet. The change that you'll see is that all the lane widths are at eight feet, consistent. But in doing so, it means fewer lanes. And so we've gone from 20 lanes to 18 in the 50-meter pool. Again, I'll come back to that. On the recreational pool, we've widened the pool, we've deepened the pool, and we've made it longer. And I'll talk about what that means in a bit. We changed the location of the changing room to address the needs of what we heard from the teams, as well as what we think is a better design. And we've taken out the bulkhead from the mix and used the money that we had set aside for the bulkhead to go toward the changes here. And so the net cost of that is about $150,000, which is pretty good, considering this is a $77 million project. So how did we get there? Just like Janine talked about, some of the work that was done in years past, this is going back to 2019, the mission statement around aquatics that was determined by the council at that time. It's a multi-generational community facility. It provides a balance of instruction, recreation and competition. It supports family events and social activities for local and for regional activities. And again, the need for balanced programming drives us in what we do, and I will say that a few times tonight. Principles. So we started with the mission, now we have principles. We established these principles when we started the conceptual and the schematic process. So I'm not going to read all this, but again, balance of recreation, competition, accommodates the programs that we currently offer at Clark Swim Center, and provides an opportunity for future programming, but are focused on the programs that we do today. That's competition, that's recreation, and that's people who just want to drop in and have fun. Maximizing the pool deck space, right sizing the bathhouse, and providing more spaces to improve our functionality. So those principles were what we focused on when we went back and said, how can we make the March 5th design even better? Our agreement with the Aquatic Foundation was our other principle here. And so this was a pledge back in 2022, an agreement between the city and WCAF to raise money toward the construction of the pool. Primarily, their focus was on the 50-meter pool, but the money is going to go toward the whole facility. So $3 million was their pledge for those two pools, a 50-meter pool and a family recreation pool. And the city's commitment to the Aquatic Foundation was to allow them to provide input on designs and location of facilities throughout this process, and we've done that. So what's the net result? I'm pleased to be able to share with you what staff believes and the design team believes is a solution to the challenges that we were faced with just a month and a half ago. So those include short course lanes in the 50-meter pool. Those are the 25-yard lanes going across. When we show, and I'll show you an image of this in a little bit. When we showed this to you before, there were 20 short course lanes. Remember that some of those were seven feet, some were eight feet wide. We made them all eight feet wide. But in doing so, we've gone from 20 lanes to 18 lanes, so it's a loss of two lanes on the short course. The pool depths remain the same in this design, and the long course remains the same, which is nine lanes going 50 meters. So again, with that loss of two lanes on the, on the 50-meter pool, staff looked at this and said, what if we added two more lanes to the recreation pool? So going from the six lanes that we had on March 5th to eight lanes today, same total lanes, right? We had 20 in the, in the 50-meter pool, six in the recreation pool. Now we're showing 18 lanes in the 50, and eight in the 25, at that time 25 yard, you know, like in 25 meters, but essentially the same number of lanes, 26. We're also suggesting that we deepen a third of that pool beyond what we showed you on March 5th. On the 5th, we talked about a shallow pool from three six to five feet. We heard a lot during the meeting on the 5th that the synchron, that the artistic swim team was looking for more deep water. And so what we're showing, what I'll show you in the image, is that there's more deep water programming opportunities now than we had on the 5th, which allows the aquanuts a place to be both during their regular practice time, and especially during the long course swim time, that we heard a lot about whether it's aqua bears or masters. So provides a place for the aquanuts and gives a little bit more room to the masters and the aqua bears during the time that they're on long course. We've extended the recreation pool. We heard from the masters that the annual, what they call short course meters meet, a 25-meter meet that they run the diving well, which is 25 meters, was something that was important to them, not just for the community, for their programming, but as fundraising. And so extending that pool from 25 yards to 25 meters addresses that concern, also takes away the potential need for a bulkhead, which is what the potential was. If the bulkhead was there, you could have a 25-meter course in the 50-meter pool. We have relocated the changing rooms, and I'll show you what that looks like, from kind of the far west side of the building over to the eastern side, which is closer to the pools, better access, better visibility, and easier for the teams and, and community to access the pools from the changing room. And that, that didn't add cost to the design, even better. We're providing support for a future scoreboard. This is not the scoreboard itself, but the infrastructure in the design would allow for conduit wiring, everything that's needed for a scoreboard to be identified and placed, and that could be a fundraising opportunity for the community. The other elements that you saw on March 5th are not changed. So the beach entry, the play structure, and the current channel are still the same as what, what we showed you back a month and a half ago. So again, in terms of cost, if you remember, the bulkhead, which was in the $77 million budget, was about a $1.08 million option. We've taken that out, and as a result, we're able to allocate those funds toward the recreation pool. And the difference is a little bit more, $150,000, but again, we still feel that's worth it for an investment to get this. So those are the design changes that, that we show, but so what? Did they meet the expectations of the council and community? A question that was raised a lot during March 5th was, does the design meet FINA, which is now World Aquatics Standards? Staff and the Aquatic Foundation met, we talked about this in meetings. Staff and the aquatic foundation met, we talked about this immediately after the March 5th meeting, and we agreed that a third-party review of the work that the aquatic design group had done on this would be helpful to determine, do we, or how, does the design meet those standards? So, staff contracted with a company called Councilman Hunsicker, which is probably the other big aquatic design firm in the country. And they independently reviewed the work that Dennis and his team had done with the overlay of, how does this meet the World Aquatics Standards? And that's in your packet, I'm not going to go into the detail, but the summary sentence from that group was, the findings were, "The proposed concept, which we showed you, complies with the World Aquatics Competition Regulation for swimming depth and for artistic swimming field of play." That's a technical way of saying, yes, this complies with World Aquatics Standards, which supports the work that Aquatic Design Group had done and staff, and I think the aquatic foundation feel good about that. And then there's a question about scheduling and programming. We heard this from council, this was direction from you to say, does a new design better meet the needs of the community? This is across the board in terms of programming. So, we believe that this concept allows for more competition use. When I say competition, I mean competitive team, use of the recreation pool, the synchronized, the artistic swim team. Could also be used by the masters, right, for their swim meet, and maybe even the aqua bears for some of their practices. This balances the programming across, what I'm saying is three pools, right? You have two pools at Clark and then one pool at Larky, allowing a balanced mix of programming for the three competition teams, the community uses, and things like camps and our programming that the city does. So, staff shared this concept with the aquatic foundation. Staff met with the coaches from all three teams. We received support from the foundation and the teams for this conceptual schedule. And so, what does that mean for the foundation? I'm going to brag a little bit, that the partnership that we have with this group is really strong. Mike Keeney, the president of the foundation, is here tonight, and I appreciate their support and partnership and relationship that we've had over the past 15-plus years on this project, going back longer for the teams and the work they've done here at Clark, 30, 40, 50 years. And so, we received, and the city was grateful for this, a letter of support from the foundation, which is in your packet, showing support for the design which is presented to you tonight, as well as a commitment to continue to work together on meeting the terms of the MOU and receiving and soliciting their input on the design as we move forward. So, partnership with the aquatic foundation continues to be strong, and we're very pleased with their support. So, images. What does this look like now? This is where we were on March 5th, and I can toggle back and forth between these if you'd like. So, again, this was a 20-lane 50-meter pool, which is the rectangle on the right, from the depths of three six to 13 feet, a varying width of the lanes from eight feet to seven feet as you go. South to north, it went from eight feet to seven feet as you have that lighter pink area. And then the recreation pool was six lanes, and the depth was three and a half to five feet. So, as I go to what we have now, the 50-meter pool, the dimensions don't change. It's still 50 meters by 25 yards, but the change is that we have wider, consistent eight-foot lanes throughout the pool. But again, we go from 20 lanes to 18. So that's what I've circled there. It's hard to read, but there are 18 lanes going left or right there. That's 25 yards, short course. We still have the same long course, that's north to south, nine lanes there. Thank you, Alana. On the recreation pool, which is the smaller rectangle on the left, it's gone from, again, six lanes at 25 yards, to now eight lanes at 25 meters. And then the other change is in that little bit darker blue there, that's where the deeper water is. So now goes from three and a half, transitions to, Dennis, four and a half? To eight feet at the deepest end there. And so again, about a third of that pool is, is that eight feet? Yeah, a third of that pool is eight feet deep. So we've had a lot of discussions with the aquanuts about, will that meet your needs? Nobody's needs will be met completely in any of these designs, including the cities, but it will meet a lot of their needs. And this is very similar to what we have at Larky. Larky has about 10 or 11 lanes, this shows eight, but the synchronized swim team is the primary user of Larky, and this essentially adds more deep water to their needs. And so, we're pleased with that. And then up on top is the change in the changing room. So it goes from, it was on the left there, which is again, a little bit farther, and the entrance, Alana, is up on the right a little bit, if you could go on right. Yep, that's where the entrance is. And so, we had the changing room way on the other side, closer as you're heading to the park. And so, this new design, which was suggested by the aquatic foundation, moves it as you just enter the building. It's immediately there, the changing room. And so, there have been some other changes to the bathhouse as well, but we're primarily focused on the changing room. So, again, happy to come back to this if you'd like. This shows the overall site plan. The point I want to make here is, with all the changes that I just described, there is no additional encroachment into the park. So it's still the same footprint that we had on March 5th, which was something that was important to the council and to the community. And so, Janine already showed this, but I like it, because this is a very nice picture of what the facility is, at least at this point, schematically going to look like. The pool you see, you know, the 50-meter pool is farthest, going toward Mount Diablo, is the 50-meter pool. The recreational pool is the one a little bit closer. And then the community center is in front, near the pond. And so, this just kind of shows you how it all relates to each other. And so, in closing, at least for my part, summary. This meets, this design, staff feels this meets the balanced mission that the council approved back in 2019, as well as the design principles that were established as we embarked on this project. Satisfies the World Aquatics Standards. It adds potential scheduling and programming opportunities, doesn't add significantly to the budget, and it's supported by staff, the design team, and the foundation. And before I close with giving kudos to council, I also want to acknowledge my staff, specifically Karen Houston-Martin, who's here in the audience, whose relationship with the teams and her dedication to putting together not one, but two many-page conceptual schedules, I think really made the difference here in helping the teams and the foundation understand that this is a facility that can work for all of us. So thank you, Karen, for all your work. And so, with the city council's support, as you've shown throughout this process, this project will continue to move forward. So we're excited about that. So with that, happy to answer your questions.
I was so fascinated, I forgot I had to run the meeting. Is there any further questions from council? Kevin, please.
Thank you very much. I'm sure we have a lot to talk about during the debate portion. Great to see some of the compromises here that were worked out. But I'm curious, were any of the aquatics groups, I'm talking about all the groups that we were putting all together for, compromised negatively by the change? I mean, it looks like great positives. Was there a consequence that is going to negatively impact one of the teams?
Staff doesn't believe so. I would expect that if the aquatic foundation president has thoughts about that, he would share them. But when we met with the teams a couple of weeks ago, we didn't hear that from any of the three major swim teams.
That's good.
Thank you for the question, yes.
Good. We heard a lot about competitive tournaments. How were those impacted by this?
So tournaments meaning broadly swim meets and other activities? We believe, I can show you, through this concept, while the city doesn't host meets, we don't host meets, right? It's the swim teams that host the meets, but we believe with this design, we can do more than we showed on March 5th. So for example, the masters meters meet can be hosted here now by the masters team. We can, we believe, continue to host the all-city meet, the conference meet. But it's not our intent to have a whole lot of major swim meets, because again, one, with the proximity to the community center, the more big meets we have here, the less we can do in that building. It also affects the rest of the park. And so, events that probably take up most of the facility, we're looking at maybe four big, big, big events a year, like all-city, like conference meet. And so, that's when we kind of close down other activities in the park, rentals and other activities on the soccer field. But when I say four, we could still do, in addition to those four, we could still do the masters short course meters meet, right? Because that does not close the whole facility. We could still do a synchronized swim show, that does not close the whole facility. So, we can do more through this design, but the intent is not to do a whole lot more.
Thank you, those are my questions.
Anyone else?
Thank you very much. To me, this feels like good news.
Me too.
One of the issues that had come up over the course of time was that the original design at Clark, all three pools were connected on the same system, which meant that we'd get one temperature, and everybody had to live with it. Does this accommodate multiple temperature pools? Is it, and can you explain that, or should I hold my question and ask this of the pool designer?
Well, I will answer your yes or no question, say yes, and then I will have Dennis Berkshire address the how of that. And even today, we can have different temperatures in the pools just because the pool depths are different, but you can't set it that way. It just kind of happens naturally, but I'll have Dennis talk about that.
It's an organic process.
Exactly. Well, the deeper pools, right, hold their temperatures better than the shallow pools. But Dennis will talk about the design going forward.
Good evening. It's nice to see you all here again. Yes, first of all, we have two separate systems. So both of the rec pool and the competition pool operate independently. We can have temperatures set up with whatever it is we're wanting to use to those. Within the pool itself, say the rec pool for example, we have the ability to vary, and based on the way we're looking at the sizing and the turnover of water, we can vary the temperature slightly. In other words, we can set it up so that we've got more water going to the shallow, coming out of the heater, so that you can try to get that slightly warmer than the other parts of the pool. But beyond that, you're going to be limited to that co-mingling of the water within the pool itself.
So, the eight-foot deep water in the recreation pool is likely to be cooler than the splash water in the, near the slide and play area?
It is, for two reasons. Massive water, that depth that you've got, we look at the pounds of water that we've got there and the battery that it becomes. And the second is that in the shallow water, we're going to have water turning over through that area about once every hour to or so, whereas in that deep water, it's turning over once every six hours. So we're not taking the heated water to that deep water as frequently, which will allow us to get that as well.
Organic, natural. Okay, I have some other questions, but you know, they may involve you.
The elimination for the need for the bulkhead, also, just to ensure I understood, because we never saw it in the design previously, we needed to add two meters to the 50-meter pool previously to accommodate the storage capacity for that bulkhead. So, the cost savings was not only in the bulkhead itself, but also in the extra length of the 50-meter pool?
Correct, that's right.
Will the recreation pool, the eight-foot deep end, be deep enough? I think the answer is yes, for starting blocks for the 25-meter masters program.
Yes, it does. It exceeds the state requirement of six feet six inches. It exceeds the World Aquatics or FINA standard. In fact, the World Aquatics FINA standard is four and a half feet, which our state health doesn't even allow. So, while it exceeds that, and so, high school, master swim, all of those, it exceeds the requirements for safe diving.
So that, okay. And previously, it wouldn't have been able to do that. So it'll be set up for starting blocks, but portable?
Correct, yeah, they're removable and they can be stored away.
Removable, thank you. Portable, well, they're portable too, because if you remove them, you aren't just going to leave them standing, sitting on the deck. The last meeting that we discussed this, there's a grade change between the area with the 50-meter pool and the area with the recreational pools. What have you done here to accommodate the location of bleachers and the, taking advantage of the grade change? Oh, I bet I got somebody else. Yes. I'm going to think, see if I can think of a question for each of you. You want to hold up a flashcard to tell me what to ask?
Good evening, thank you. So we, oh, I'm Gina Chavez, landscape architect from RRM Design Group. So we do have space in that center area for removable and portable bleachers. So lots of space, that whole center area. There are, we removed one staircase, which was in the center, which allowed for more blank, flexible space. Oh, thank you, yes. Correct. So now we have staircases at either end, as well as an accessible ramp on the north end.
And I noticed in the staff report that we lost a bit of square footage of paved service. Is it in the recreation area, or is it in the 50-meter pool area?
It's in the recreation area.
All right. So basically, the recreation pool slid west.
That's right.
To accommodate the additional length of the recreational pool, as well as not to lose more deck space around the 50-meter pool.
That's correct, yes. Because of the all-abilities playground, we have no more room to move south.
Right. Thank you, I think that has been very helpful, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, I did have another question. Who's responsible for the changing rooms? All right, see? I'm working my way through you all. I don't know you exactly, so I don't know what to ask you.
Don't worry, you'll be able to.
And we received a public comment that it's still not right, there's still not adequate changing rooms, et cetera. Did you see that public comment?
I did.
Do you have, would you like to clarify what's being misconstrued by the member of the public?
Sure. Jocelyn Lawrence Barish, I'm with Nolan Tam, architects. And the question that we received was talking about how there did not appear to be sinks, either the adequate number, or maybe they weren't able to see what we were representing to be sinks in the changing room. So the changing rooms include showers that have changing room compartments attached to them, so there's a little more privacy than what you would have at Clark today, and restrooms, and sinks. And the amount that are in that block that you see to the north aren't the only ones that will be available to the pool deck, but they are able to accommodate the traffic that mostly will be usually coming through the pool facility. So there definitely are sinks in the design, fear not. There is actually a code requirement for a specific number of fixtures, and we are going to meet that.
And I remember that there is a code requirement, and it's really based on the amount of flat water.
Exactly.
Right, so this actually addresses the requirement that a certain amount of flat water has to, per toilet?
Yeah, it's essentially that there's a certain amount of flat water determines an occupant load factor. It's like a 15 square feet per person, that's right, Dennis? Ah, good. And that tells you how many people they could expect at maximum capacity. And even though that's actually really tight, you were not really going to have a one person every 15 square feet in those pools. But it accounts for spectators and various people on the deck that might need facilities as well. So that maximum number of people is then compared to a table that tells you how many fixtures are required for restrooms, for showers, for sinks, for even drinking fountains, and those will all be accommodated in the design.
So the important thing is that you have to show that we have adequate number of toilets. That's the driving factor, and the sinks will be in the more detailed design in the subsequent. All right, thank you. You're welcome. I'm waiting to see if you could figure out one more question to ask for the guy that managed to get away with it.
But I'd have to guess, like, you know, what kind of plants are you going to use around the, but he might not be the landscape architect, so.
Okay, Matt, would you go next, please?
Thank you. I'm not sure who among you, but one of you can answer it, I'm sure. In terms of deck space and landscaped area, which I know is really important, compared to the, what we have now at Clark and the prior design, well, really, mostly what we have now at Clark.
Yeah. Janine, do we have a backup slide on this? All right. I'm going to ask one of my staff, Karen, can you look at this, did you have a printout of it? Mike, did you have a printout of it, that you can see what this looks like in real time? Anyway, so Janine is going to come up. So, the headline is, there's more. There's more landscaped area than we have in Clark today, and there's more deck space than we have in Clark today. Unfortunately, my slide is a little bit too tiny to see unless you can have really good eyes, but you may have to go from memory.
Well, I don't remember the exact numbers, but it is more. Yeah, in previous presentations, we had a blow-up of that table. Can you zoom in? Oh, yes.
It's on page nine in the staff report, bottom.
Okay. My eyes still aren't great. Can you read it?
35,961 currently.
Yeah, 36, 36 to 40. So it's about 36 today, 36,000 square feet today is the pool deck, and you're going to about 40,000. and you're going to about forty thousand. The number showed you in March was about forty-two thousand, roughly. So it's gone down a little bit, Councilmember Francois, from where we were in March because of the expansion of the recreation pool. That's the pool deck. The landscaped area is going from about the same, about thirty-six. It's about 50/50 at Clark today to about 39,000 square feet. So it's more square feet in both.
And was the bulkhead factored into the March deck space? Because that was taking up space on the...
It was not, because we hadn't pursued that option yet. So if we had, then it would have been, it may be similar to what you see today in this design.
Okay. I think that's all I had for now. Thank you.
Mayor Portim.
I just have a simple question, and it's going on the rec pool from 25 yards to 25 meters. Is that going to, is that going to be used as part of regular training ground? And does that difference between the yards and the meters affect the kids as far as? I remember the obsession with learning your number when you cross the T and how to your flip.
Right, so this is similar to what we have today in the diving well. That's 25 meters. And then the 50-meter pool has 25 yards in the short course. So we already have that mix of different lengths in both pools, but Karen can talk a little bit more about how we anticipate programming it. And I don't expect there's a whole lot of difference between programming 25-meter and 25-yard pool, but you can...
How we, hi, sorry. Karen Houston Martin, program manager. The way that we envision programming that pool, if we need to move, it would be used primarily during long course, when the 50-meter pool is long course. We would be able to divide the 50-meter pool up and have synchro in the 50-meter pool while putting some of the older kids, or at the discretion of the Aqua Bear coaches, which of their teams would use that 50-meter pool. Currently, the Aqua Bears use the diving well in the morning and swim 25 meters all year round. No?
So it's already happening. If it's wrong, it's already happening. Yeah, and then, oh, there was one more question. Oh, I know. The lane widths in the rec pool are seven foot or eight foot?
They're currently seven feet, which is consistent with the diving well right now.
Okay, so it's basically replicating what we have in the diving well at this point. Okay, all right, thank you.
I've never competitively swum, and I don't know what I'm asking, except it seems to me like if we're having meets, do the, are the pools compatible? So like the recreational long part can be warm-up stuff for somebody who's going to be in the...
Yes, if we held a 25-yard meet, typically, we would take the 10 lanes that are the deepest and up to 13, 14, wherever that cutoff is, and use those for competitive, have two lanes, at least two lanes of like a buffer. And then the remainder of the lanes could be used as warm-up, warm-down. We could also use the 25-meter for warm-up and warm-down as well. And we've done that in the past.
Okay. I hope everybody knows that I know you need to warm up. Okay, is there any other yes?
Let me, one more quick one. In the new pool, I know when we would run the Clark pool for a meet, you couldn't do dives in the practice area. Is this pool going to be deep enough that you could do dives in the practice area?
To do, like, racing start dives?
Yeah, racing starts.
What, by practice area, you mean the recreational?
I mean, the shallow end, when you have a meet and you have the...
So it would not be, but when we run meets, we don't want those swimmers diving into the, into the practice lanes, because it's a little unorganized.
They jump on top of each other. I've been in charge of that, and it's not fun. Like, ah, okay, all right, thanks.
Okay. I don't see any need for the council to ask additional questions. Is there any other additional information you'd like to share with us?
I'm going to hand this over to Jocelyn Lawrence Bearish to talk about sustainability, and then she's also going to talk about essential services. And then we'll be happy to answer any questions. So the questions about each of those topics after she's done with each one, and then we'll come back to you again if you have any more about aquatics. But Jocelyn, thank you.
Good evening. So we also have some sustainability options, in addition to aquatics, to talk to you tonight about. And I wanted to start by saying, I'll really focus on option two, and saying what is already part of the current design. Option two most clearly defines that. So we did already have, in our design, building that you could call sustainable. It is not simply a code-compliant building. You should know that the California code does require that buildings be fairly sustainable at this point, but we've gone beyond that in three key respects. The first is, there is no technical requirement for photovoltaic array of solar panels currently required by code for this kind of facility. And instead of just bowing to that, we've said, no, it would be a great idea to have, we targeted a 25 to 50% energy offset for the building. It results in a 135-kilowatt PV array, which can easily be accommodated on the well-aspected roofs of the current design. In addition to that, we've made the commitment that the building will be an all-electric facility. Similarly, even though the code is trending towards that requirement, it is not currently a requirement that the building be all-electric. So we're exceeding code by saying that the building facility itself will only run on electric energy, which allows it to be compensated by renewable energy sources. And lastly, we're aiming for a LEED silver equivalency. So just a little brief primer about what that means. So LEED is a standard set by the U.S. Green Building Council many, many years ago. And for those of you who are less familiar with it, it's a series, a very long series of checklists. And it's a certain combination of all of the points that you earn on that checklist that determines which level you can reach. And so we have, we have not yet completed the checklist to figure out which exactly ones we would need to get to LEED silver. Having the PV array, having an all-electric facility gets you well towards that LEED equivalency, but there'd be an additional number of strategies, probably largely focused on water use reduction that could get us to those LEED silver points that would be required. And by equivalency, we mean, we probably would refrain from actually registering the product with, the project with the US GBC, and instead focus the somewhat sizable fees that it's required to do that on actually the design itself. So that's all included within the current project costs that we've been holding. We've given you a number of other options to consider, however. The first is a more conservative, less sustainable option over in the left-handmost column, where instead of assuming an all-electric facility, it would be a hybrid electric and gas-powered facility. And there would be a very, a very much smaller array of PVs. It's still not the zero that's required by code, but closer to what code would require, should code be applied to this kind of building. The code requirements for photovoltaic arrays is actually fairly small currently. So it would be closer to this 50-kilowatt PV array you see in column one. And instead of looking for those extra water reductions, et cetera, to lead, to address a LEED silver level of equivalency, we would simply be sticking with the code guidelines for how the building would be sustainable. And you would have a resultant savings of about 500K for the project. In addition, there's two more columns. The third one is the staff-recommended option. So as the group of designers and city staff who've been considering all of the multitude and the sustainable strategies that could be implemented for a project like this, it was really decided that providing the infrastructure, so specifically providing the structural support required and the electrical support that would be required to have more photovoltaic array in the future, more possibility for adding some battery backup for the building would be a very worthy investment at this point in the project. Retrofitting structure to support more PVs over time is very difficult and costly. And at this point, building it from scratch in that way is a much more cost-effective way to build. And the batteries, I can spend more time talking about them as you so choose, but we did a pretty deep dive into research. That's actually what our additional row member here is, who is our director of sustainability and project architect for the project, can talk about research we did into how batteries could or may not play a role in the project. Essentially, what it came down to was the current battery technology would require that if we house them within the facility itself, there'd be a very significant fire separation that makes it difficult to house them within the building itself. It would actually be more cost-effective to house them separately, in a separate structure, perhaps in the parking lot, which makes the folks who are concerned about parking access and parking count a little nervous. And in addition, the ways that the battery can act in concert with some of the other services that will, and options that we'll talk about that the building might provide are not quite as flexible as they are poised to be in the near future. And so it seemed, as we were a group deciding on what to recommend or not, that battery technology is about to get a lot better. And giving yourself the opportunity to expand into more battery capacity that could be contained within the building itself for, with more flexibility in how those batteries function, is probably the best way to spend your money at the moment. However, should the council choose, there are some other sustainable options we've provided costs for. One of those is a 10% battery backup for the facility. So you can see the actual cost of what that would require. You could also add additional photovoltaic panels. If you wanted to come close to actually equaling out the energy consumption of the building itself, you'd need to add another 165 kilowatts of PVs. And that would mean more than could be accommodated simply on the roofs themselves. You'd need to then have some of the trellises and other structures within the site able to support PVs. You would therefore not need to have the future support functions. You would have maxed out your PV capability at that point. There are other things that we could look at and would need to look at if we, for instance, wanted to reach the next level of LEED equivalency or certification. We've actually put the price here for actual certification for a LEED gold level. And some of the things that were brought up that could be, for instance, in alignment with the city's sustainability action plan could be things like instituting natural ventilation throughout the building, having a portion of the building include a green roof. They do come with a price tag, and we've summarized some of those prices in that far-right column. So obviously, to the leftmost column, that's the more conservative, more fiscally responsible set of options. And to the left, the more sustainable, therefore slightly more first cost, has more first cost in that right-handmost column. And so both myself and also Edward Reifenstein, our director of sustainability, are happy to take your questions about any portions of this. And there's certainly a lot of background information we both put in the staff report and that went into the creation of these categories, so please feel free.
I'm going to get the first question, which is, do we, do we take into consideration, this is just the building cost? I'm assuming the more you add in the power department and the battery department and that sort of thing, your day-to-day operating costs are saved? And so, you know, it would take a long time to make up 2.3 million. But is it, is it worth considering that the operating costs would go down?
It is a consideration. It's not one that formed the basis of this matrix, but it is worth, is worth paying attention to. As you move further to the right, is, by definition, when a system is more sustainable, you will, over the long term, have a greater return on investment. However, there is, there is a specific project budget that we are trying to meet. And so that did inform that balance of fiscal responsibility and making sure we kept the commitment to have this be a sustainable building. Hopefully, that answers a question.
Anybody else? Matt, please.
Thank you. Thank you for the information. What were the assumptions in option two about battery storage?
There is none.
Okay. And is that, it's only when you get to option four?
That's right.
Okay. And so it's just essentially that it's, we have solar on the building to offset about 25 to 50% of our energy usage of the building?
That's right.
And nothing for the pool? And maybe that's a pool guy question. Is that just something that you wouldn't do for a commercial facility like this? It's only done for a residential?
I can partially answer that question, and Ned can help me if needed. But we did actually look at the possibility of having electric pools and finding a way to offset them. And the cost of that did not fit within the project budget as it currently stands.
Because of the number of arrays that you would need to heat that amount of water?
Yeah, it's a scale factor different than what you're looking at here, because heating pool water is energy-intensive.
Okay. Thank you. Those were my questions.
Mayor Portim.
Thank you, and thanks for diving into this. Sorry. I'm kind of looking, when I started looking at this, I really started looking at it as the well I was talking about, as, as we're investing in the sustainability features that reduce the operating costs, there's a payback period. And the things that affect that payback period are, how much does it cost? How much are you saving? And then how much, what opportunities are there to reduce your capital expenditures? And so I know, I know the answer to this, because I asked the staff. The Federal Inflation Reduction Act included a provision that is going through rulemaking right now that allows cities who do not pay taxes and who have been unable to benefit from the 30%, we will be able to benefit from them when the rulemaking's done. Did we factor in the Inflation Reduction Act in the cost of the arrays and the storage?
At the moment, we can't, only in that the price that we need to keep in the project budget is the one that you have to pay the contractor. And so those are the prices reflected here. Any of those incentives that you would get would be received after you would have already paid that money to the contractor. So you would, as you've discussed, you know, be able to potentially be eligible for those programs and then see a savings. But just to make sure you have the money to cover all your costs, we have to tell you what it is without those at first.
Okay, and then there's also a number of different programs looking at, you know, kind of the dual challenges of sustainability with emergency response. And I know, I could give you some of the names, but there are a couple that are focused specifically on energy supply reliability and storage for buildings that are used as emergency response centers. And they have weird criteria, like you have to have had two power safety shut-offs, and you have to do this, and you have to do that. Have we done any evaluating of the grants that are available right now? I know the CPUC has like $2 billion right now for the sustainable.
We looked less at the grants, because we had our mechanical engineering plumbing subconsultant give us a deep education in how batteries could play a role in your essential services functions. And what they told us is that the bottom line is, it wouldn't be the recommendation to use batteries, even though code is beginning to allow batteries to provide energy for essential services, specifically because batteries soon will be, but are not as flexible as a gas-powered generator. And when you're trying to provide emergency energy, the flexibility of that, and specifically that a gas generator can keep running all day with gas being poured into it. But batteries have a specific capacity and must be recharged. And so it's likely very soon coming that there will be the same kind of network of batteries, that there are a network of portable generators to supply that in the future. But since we're not quite there, that's why we're saying, give yourself the opportunity to have battery energy take over in the future. But at the moment, since you're not quite there, don't commit to a system that could very soon get a lot better.
Okay. And then when we started the project, I know lead times with PG&E are long, but I understand we didn't apply for net metering two. We're at net metering three. And I know net metering three really doesn't pay off as well unless you have solar storage combined.
That's right. But maybe, I'm holding out hopes for a NEMA four that could be better than NEMA three that you could be eligible for, who knows? As a personal, I'm personally signed up into NEMA two. I understand exactly what you're talking about. And so it's true that a battery storage is kind of the only way that you will, you will get any benefit in your relationship with PG&E, with PVs. And so, that still being said, this is, this was our way of meeting the project budget.
So if you were to go through and do option three, which gives you the flexibility to add components over time, one of the other things with the Inflation Reduction Act is there are all these requirements on those things about project labor and not using bond dollars and all of those things. If you were to pull those together and make them a separate component that you, you didn't do instantaneously with this project, but looked at it as, we are investing in reducing our operating cost over time with, when we get past that magic threshold where the batteries work better, you could come back then, like... work better, you could come back then, like depending on how well you believe the miracle in batteries in a year or two, and say, okay, now we have, we're going to do just that part of this. You could do that with this.
Absolutely, especially since what we're looking at now is not something that's integrated into the facility, but would have been separate anyway. So it's very easily a separate project.
So regardless, as long as we're using lithium for batteries, they're going to be separate from the structure. They're going to be in the parking lot. They might not look attractive, but they're going to be in the parking lot. So we can go in and add that at a future point and be fine.
And that's what option three's package would make easy by having those connections ready to be switched, you know, throw the switch and it's all connected.
Okay. And then the, when you get to the full 300 kilowatt, at that point, you're actually putting them on the trellises, not just on the roof?
That's right. There's not enough roof space for the full 300 array.
How much roofs, how much? And I know they're getting more effective over time. I got them up. Yeah. How, what can you put on that roof?
Yes, I'm Ned Reifenstein, also an architect with Nolan Tam. So you can get about 200 kilowatts on the roof. That is, in the really optimal orientation, the south-facing orientation. We could put more. It wouldn't be, it might not be as cost-effective in terms of the yields you'd get. And the optimal would probably be on the trellises instead. That's a study we would do in the next phase. If we were to go for a 300 kilowatt target, we would figure out where to put them. But our sense right now is that only about 200 of that would fit on the roof.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking. Because the last part, it seems you're saying that you're pretty sure that the batteries are not worth it right now. But I know, I also sit on the MCE board and we are actively looking for commercial and industrial locations that can combine solar with batteries.
What our engineers said to us was, right now, projects that opt for that are bearing the forerunner cost of that. And so it's a higher first cost than you would eventually bear. So if we had a much more flexible project budget, it would be easier to recommend it because we have a number of costs, you know, the changes in the aquatics options, and you do still have one more.
Yes.
Actually, we need to look at that have costs associated with them that, we needed to balance that with the fiscal responsibility overall. So that's, we still wanted to put the price up there so you could see if this is something, a direction you want to go in.
And I know there's also private companies like NG that are out there actively looking to bear that tip-of-the-spear cost. Have you, it doesn't sound like you've taken that there on this project. Have you worked on any other of the projects? I know that they are approaching some of the cities around the Bay Area about, they have been approaching a couple of the cities about putting solar and storage together on, from an entrepreneurial perspective.
Public-private partnership? No.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thanks.
Looking for other questions?
I feel like after that, anything I ask is going to be simple math after hearing that calculus course. So I'm going to let Cindy's questions feel like we've gotten further.
We changed out the batteries in our cabin and the technology from 2009 to this year is gobsmacking.
Yeah.
But.
She's telling you, I think that it'll be.
I know. We're getting gobsmacked like in a, in a.
Ascetotically, yeah.
Okay. I don't hear any forward motion from the council here. So do we have one more section to discuss?
So let's move, hopefully not requiring calculus.
Yeah. Okay. So there was also a directive at the beginning of this project during conceptual design. It was set that this facility should act in some manner as an essential services facility for the city. And so we did a lot of exploration into how exactly that could get to find, what exactly that would include. And there are three different options in front of you for how that could be accommodated. So specifically, what we've been targeting is something called an EOC or an Emergency Operations Center. In order to qualify for that, the structure has to be designed to what we call structural risk category four. And what that means in layman's terms is that the building is immediately occupiable after a seismic event, like a hospital. It makes it seem like anything less than structure four might be unsafe, but it's really not true. Most of our buildings are not designed to that level and they're very, very safe. But this one is extra safe. Essentially, it's a very similar structural design, but everything is upsized by a certain factor to make sure that it really won't go anywhere so that emergency personnel within the city can use this as a center for communication. So in order to do that, you don't actually have to have the whole facility to be designed to that structural level. Obviously, having larger structural members bears a certain amount of cost. Relative to the overall cost of the project, it's not that large. But there is, we've broken this down so that within the first category, we would design at least 50% of the facility to this higher structural risk category level, probably the community center portion, since it has rooms and areas that are easier for staff to assemble in. We would also assume that there would be a spot for hookup of a portable generator. We did consider whether or not there should be a permanent generator on site. And it, the city staff have a lot of familiarity with using portable generators and assure us that that is the most cost-effective way to provide an easy source of consistent energy for this particular function. And then the HVAC system that we're specifying also has the ability to add smoke filtration so that in the event that it's not actually an earthquake that causes everyone to rush this building to need to do emergency communications, there could be protection from wildfire smoke, for instance. So the first option is the most conservative, again, of the three. The middle column would be simply adding that higher risk category level to the entire building. What that would gain you is potentially a longer period of operation. The rest of the building has more restrooms. And so potentially, you would have, you could have a larger number of staff that could be accommodated, who might need to be taking action with the emergency communication. But none of them are truly an EOC, excuse me, for column one, neither column one or two are actual EOC. They're called EOC-ready, as in they're almost ready to be, to act as this communication center, but it's the portion that's missing is listed in column three, which is the communication systems themselves. There's additional infrastructure within the communication system and the actual equipment itself that doesn't have a use during the regular normal operation of the facility that could be housed on site, that would make it from EOC-ready into an actual EOC, that literally all that would have to happen would be staff roll up and begin to use the center to provide emergency communications for the city itself. Each of these does have a slight more cost. All of them are currently well within the cost that was set aside and allocated for this particular function for the building during the conceptual cost estimate. And it's literally just a question of, you know, a slightly more conservative, do we need all of that space to withstand an earthquake? And do we want to have the communications functions already on site or could we use other ones that the city may have? So any questions you have about this, we're also happy to take. We looked into a lot of other options than these, but these seem like the best way to fulfill this function for the city.
I'm looking for light. Cindy Silva.
Now you're in my wheelhouse a little bit, not as much as hers. But so let's talk about EOC operational, what it means from a true communication standpoint. Does this mean we need more towers or antennas on the site? Do we need to store consoles there? Do we need to store radios there?
Not likely one or two, but yes, likely three and four. And the design has not been completed, so I don't have a 100% answer to any of those, but that's the initial.
We're going to assume that the network itself is going to.
Yes, we're assuming the network itself is actually still working. Same would is actually true of the plumbing system.
Okay. And it is, I'm just saying, you know, I'm on the California Seismic Safety Commission and seen pictures of.
Yes.
Category four versus three versus two, and it's hospitals, fire stations, and police departments for fours. And why wouldn't we want to make this a four?
Which might sway your decision from column one to column two, because there's a pool that you could get to if the whole building is seismically sound.
Okay. Thank you.
I was a little confused about the discussion of the budget. It says all options are in the EOC budget allocation. But it, they don't obviously all cost the same? One costs more than another?
No, and they incrementally increase by about 200K roughly each. But what we mean by that is that, if you looked in the staff report at the approved project budget from February of 2023, there was a line item held for the EOC function. It was 1.77 million. So compared to, compared to what is already in the project budget, these are just incremental increases and they don't take all of that budget. So they're all well within.
We can have, if.
You could have any of the three of these. Just realize, though, we have said elsewhere that the project is not, does not have infinitely expandable budget. So any of the gains you make towards the more fiscally conservative columns are easily
Absorbed.
Absorbed into what we're trajectorying overall.
We will talk about that when Josh comes finished. We'll talk some of these other cost considerations. So this isn't a, oh, we can save money here, let's go spend it elsewhere. So I was saying the same thing.
I wasn't going to go buy a battery.
Just to be clear.
Okay. And then my other question is, I had not even thought of this until we started talking about this as an EOC. And then I was thinking, the last time our EOC was activated was not fire, not earthquake, but flood. We're not in the flood zone here, are we?
Heather Farm is not in the flood zone.
Okay, good. I just thought I should ask that question. California Department of Water Resources one time was planning their EOC on the banks of the American River until it was pointed out that it was in the flood zone. And that's a bad idea. So moving on.
Our knowledge has advanced.
Some of us, yeah.
So let me just clarify my understanding.
Yes.
Basically, this, unlike the sustainability where you can get things ready for the future, this basically says if you're going to build it to category four, category?
Yep.
Yes. Category four, you need to build it.
Yes.
Because otherwise, you're going back and trying to shore up.
Very expensive, difficult. Yeah, you want to do it now.
And you want to do the equipment now, too?
The infrastructural part at the very least, you know, the portable portions of it, that's easier to have later. But the communications infrastructure should support those pieces of communication equipment that you want to do now as well, if you can.
Councilman, Councilman Francois.
Thank you. We don't have an EOC facility now, is that right?
I'm going to have Rich Payne talk about what our current EOC capability is, if that's okay, Rich? It's not as if we're not prepared to handle, and we have handled emergencies, but not to this stand of all. Rich, talk about it.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Rich Payne, I'm the interim Assistant Public Works Director currently. In terms of our EOC, we currently have an EOC that we use here at the building on the third floor in the conference room. It doesn't meet the class four classification currently. There is some seismic upgrades to the facility. When this building was upgraded and we expanded, half of the building is seismically ready. The other half, it doesn't meet all the requirements of a class four. Yes.
Yeah, which half is it?
We're in the old side, unfortunately. Yeah.
And not to do too deep of a dive on this, sorry. Class four, I'm familiar with the standards. I've worked on a hospital project.
Sure.
OSHPOD standards. And I recognize that those are a different level. Is this class four, is that level? Is that, or is it, or fire, I heard fire stations and police headquarters are built to those standards, too?
Yeah, the OSHPOD metric is separate. So this is actually within the seismic design criteria code. So it's a, it's this, it's a structural, it's from a structural perspective that, what is the exact language? It's within the CBC?
Yeah.
So it's straight-up building code and there are different delineations of structural risk categories.
Okay. This is the best one.
Is there a five?
I mean, just to be clear, you know, the other categories are safe buildings, you know, if there is an event, you will be able to leave and not, you know, not have it fall down on you. The difference is that for two and three, you would need to have the building unoccupied and inspected and perhaps repaired before you could use it again. Whereas four means, you know, aside from a very quick visual inspection, you can go right back in and press the button and start using your equipment.
Okay.
So.
Thank you. And then I had a similar question as Councilmember Darling on the budget. I wasn't sure how the changes resulted in a savings seemingly of 1.37 million.
The.
On page 15 of the staff report.
Okay.
And it's for the essential services category.
Right. You take the 1.77 held on page two from the conceptual design and subtract the staff-recommended portion, prices aren't listed there, but I did say they're roughly 200K per level. And that's what you're, that's the savings that you've got. 1.77 minus.
So was it overestimated in 2023? Thank you, Janine.
Yes, is the right answer. And it has to do with having no real clear scope about what we meant by that. And some of the other things that you could do to make this a more robust EOC exceed the 1.77. So it seems like this covers you, you know, if you, for instance, wanted to have a backup, backup plumbing so that regardless of what happened to the grid, you would have running water that could be disposed of on site. That's not something typically you find in EOCs and would be far more expensive than was held for the 1.77. So we looked at, you know.
And they have a whole swimming pool right there. Just give them like water filters.
And a canal. Thank you.
Canal might be better.
Okay. I don't see any more questions. And is there anything more that staff wants?
So Janine is going to wrap up and then we'll turn it back to council and public comments.
Then we'll do public comment.
Yep.
Okay.
So just to summarize the staff recommendations for this evening, this slide here represents the options that are recommended for aquatics, essential services, and sustainability. And it compares it to what's in your, in the current schematic design on the left-hand side. We can come back to this again, but it just summarizes everything in this one slide. And one of the things that we wanted to point out is that the project team is currently working on a cost estimate for the schematic design package. And in so doing, there are a number of items that have come up, both construction costs and soft costs, that are cost pressures on the project budget. And those were items that weren't anticipated when the 77 million budget was accepted. So this list is some of those items. For example, the first in the list, the natural lake remediation, that's a mitigation measure. That's now, we know that that's a requirement as a result of reducing the size of the man-made pond. In addition, we've been looking at a lot of these more soft costs in more detail, such as the permit processing times. I think initially, those were anticipated to maybe be more streamlined than is typical in a process. So these are a number of costs that we will continue to monitor. And if necessary, we will come back to you if there's any additional budget allocations that are required. But at this time, we are doing our best to monitor and monitor these and stay within the budget to the best of our capability. The next steps are if council approves the recommended options as proposed, we will continue with the next phase of the project, which is the design development phase. Otherwise, if any modifications to those options are requested, then we'll need to come back and we'll stay within the schematic design phase. And those may have additional impacts to the budget, scope, and schedule. So in conclusion, the action recommended this evening is to approve the recommended modified options listed below. So for the aquatics, it's to implement the April 10th aquatic schematic design package. So for the aquatics, it's to implement the April 10th Aquatics Schematic Design Package. For the sustainability, it's to approve the lead silver equivalent. And for the essential services, it's to upgrade 100% of the building to an operational EOC. And that concludes our presentation. Oh, yeah.
Clarification on the sustainability options. Staff and the design team are recommending what we would call Option Three.
Let me confirm. Yes.
Is that correct?
Option Three. Yes.
The one that's got a big black line around it. Okay.
I'll leave it here. Thank you.
I had one quick question.
Sorry.
On the phasing of building demolition, are we looking at demolition and then issuing the contract for construction, or are we issuing those together? Or have we decided yet?
There's still a little bit of processing to do with the environmental impact assessment. But currently, we are planning demolition of the building first, the pond work second, and then the main project last.
Okay. And as part of the demolition, would that include the excavation of the pool area so that you can use that as part of pond remediation, or is that not working?
That hasn't been decided yet.
Okay. Good.
It's okay. You're not the only one. So we are at the moment when we open this to public comment, and if anybody is up for it, just the person I was hoping would come and share with us. Thank you.
Councilmembers, Mike Heaney from Walnut Creek Aquatic Foundation. I just wanted to come tonight to reiterate our support for the proposed design changes to the aquatic facility. And most of all, thank everybody who's been involved in this process for so long, for all their time, energy, and concern for your communities. And we look forward to a continued partnership.
You've got more time if you want it.
No, thank you.
Okay.
Can we use some of your time, though?
Yeah.
And just say thank you for the Aquatics Foundation. I know you guys had to do a lot of work in the last month to put together, working with the staff. And I really appreciate the effort that you guys have put into this.
It's a pleasure working with you guys.
Any other comments back here? Right. No. Except, yes, thank you very much. It made a difference. Made our days happier. Okay. No more public comment? No more public comment. So we're back to council and what I believe, Acting City Manager.
That's correct. So what you see in front of you is the recommendations from staff for council. If you'd like to take these one at a time, that's fine. If you want to do the whole package at once, exactly. But I'm happy to answer more questions if you have any, or take your comments in direction. Thank you.
Councilmember Francois.
Well, first of all, you know, I'd like to kick it kickoff by thanking staff, everybody on the Arts and Rec staff, Kevin, obviously, Karen, the whole team, you know, our consultant team, and certainly want to thank the Aquatics Foundation. This is a contrast from the last meeting and a pleasant contrast, I think. It shows when kind of we listen to one another and we roll up our sleeves and sit down and try to work on solutions, it's pretty amazing what we can accomplish. So I'm really pleased that we're at this point and really happy to move forward. I'm happy to make a motion now or later, but I will be supporting the staff recommended options. I think the logic on each of them made sense to me. I think on the pool, we've reached consensus with the Aquatics Foundation and honored our commitment to meet the programming needs of the teams, which is very important, as well as balancing that with our community needs. So I think we've certainly checked that box and taken care of my very favorite aqua nuts with some additional deep water space for them while still allowing the aqua bears to do their long course swimming. On the sustainability, the recommendation made sense to me that, you know, the roof can only support so many arrays at this point. And at some point, that battery storage is coming, and that by doing the staff-recommended option, we're not foreclosing ourselves from taking advantage of that. Hopefully, it comes in the near future. And on the ECO, I definitely think that we need a facility that's not just 50% built to that standard, but 100% built to the standard. And so each of the recommendations made sense to me and I think is the appropriate course to move forward. And I'm really glad that we were able to do this in a quick amount of time, too. I know the city manager is watching and would be, too, that we were able to accomplish this really in about a month's time. So, and not really lose any time because we're having the sustainability conversation now. So great job, everyone, and thank you very much.
Yes, please, Kevin.
All right. I would agree with that. Basically, everything Councilmember Francois said. I'm so glad to see the compromise, the solution that we worked out here. It really does balance what we were hearing from the swimming community, and that was all of the swimming programs, and what we know was needed with our community at large, which are paying the bulk of the cost for all of this. Here, we started this several years ago. We were able to pass Measure O. And it's just terrific to be able to see that we've come to an arena now where we really seem to have been able to provide the best options for the groups that we've been discussing this with. And hearing what everyone wanted to make sure that they got their points on and that we could agree upon. So I'm happy we've come to a consensus on that regarding the aquatics. When it comes to sustainability, as I was looking at everything over the course of the last several days on the report, it occurred to me, we can't solve everything on the sustainability right now. And just like technology and just like improvements that happen as well, there are going to be lower costs and more efficiencies, and we're going to see new improvements that come that future councils down the road will be able to take advantage of and save costs at that point as well. As I can't remember which was the council member that said this on another topic several years ago, we can't boil the ocean. But we can certainly make a lot of solutions to get to that point where we will be setting the table for those councils down the road. So I'm happy we come to a compromise on the consensus with all this, that we have a project and a facility that we and future generations can be proud of. And I want to thank you, the staff, for all of your work. And I think you left out Jim, but I know that you meant to include Jim as well, but along with Karen and Kevin and Public Works, everybody. This has truly been a full-team effort here, along with our consultants, along with the Aquatics Foundation and the various aquatics groups. Thank you for all finding a solution and making this work. I'm going to enthusiastically support this and all of the staff recommendations.
Thank you to all of you, members of the public, the staff, the consultants. There's a song, "A Long Winding Road." One would have hoped that 17 years ago, when I first was elected to the city council and one of the first conversations was related to what are we going to do about the future of Clark Swim Center, that there was a straight line and a straight path. But there rarely, if ever, is. And we could, I could reiterate all of the places I've been along this long winding road, but we've learned a lot in each step. And we've learned how to compromise and work together. And I think that's what's really important here because we still have many, many steps to take through this process, as was evidenced by that one slide that said, "The unknowns that are still out there." I am very supportive of the recommendations that have been made tonight. I appreciate the thoughtfulness, not only on how to make a balanced approach truly feasible in the aquatic solution, but also what we can do on the sustainability front to be ready, to be poised when the future, the true future arrives, and also to ensure that we have an operational, emergency operations center because disasters, we've had disasters. It's not only been flood, but we've suffered from fires. Not close, but you don't have to be close to suffer from the smoke from Paradise Fire or Santa Rosa or Napa. And so I'm pleased... Pardon me?
Oregon.
Or, well, yeah, that's true. I think we're in the right place, and I look forward to being able to do this and setting the stage for a very long future in our community. Thank you.
And I similarly thank everybody. I think everybody really worked hard to get us to tonight. But I'm the new kid on the block, so I'm just looking forward. We've got, you know, we're going to be looking at the next design phase, you know, next year. There's a lot that's going to, the unknowns are in there. And so I really want to emphasize, how we got here tonight was strong communication, shared understanding of each other's interests and how they can be met by this project. And I want to see that continued close collaboration with the Aquatics Foundation, with the Sustainability Committee, with everybody that's got an interest in this project. And I know you guys will do that. That's why we picked you. I think the one challenge I would like to leave is that with sustainability, it is a fast-evolving process, and it offers significant federal cost sharing now as the Inflation Reduction Act gets... I mean, we're putting PVs on there. We have the opportunity to get the credits for those. So it's incumbent upon us to become conversant in that as the federal government clarifies what the heck they mean when they say they can give cities money. It's like, oh, okay, sounds good. And then take that knowledge and then look for opportunities to turn this into, thinking about it not just as a capital cost, but an investment into a long-term operating regime that is more efficient and lower cost for the city. You know, looking at that, as the mayor said, what's your payback period? And how, when is it to that point where, yes, it's worth it and ready time to pull the plug? So I'm not sure if that's next April, when you guys come back with the next design phase, or somewhere in here. So I don't know if I stare at you guys or stare at you guys. Next April, 2025. That's the next phase. You've got a whole other year till we come back to this. But I would like to see some additional analysis of this as an enterprise. We have batteries, we have solar, we have the opportunity to offset our own costs, the opportunity to market excess energy to those that are willing to pay for it, and look and see if there's a way to create some value out of the proposition. Because we might not be quite there yet, but things are changing fast in the field, so...
I guess I should thank you because you made my day. You really did put together something where everybody can walk away. I think I was talking to our acting, I can't remember now, it's like cold, acting mayor. And I said, sometimes, under pressure, better things happen than if the pressure hadn't applied. And along the way, everybody gets really upset with it. It gets personal, it gets frustrating, it looks like it's never going to happen. And then all of a sudden, like a giant balloon that you stick a pin in, somebody says the right thing somehow, some way, and I don't know who to give credit for. Everybody, I bet you all have your own little balloons that you popped and then found the big balloon that made it all happen. I really appreciate it. The thing that makes me most excited is the practical, which is we have needed a community center, a current operation, emergency operations center. And in all the problems that we had getting here, I think we kind of never even paid attention to how much this community needs, something that we will every day get up and pray that we will never need, but when we do, we have it. And so it makes me feel better that we have taken care of that. That was very special. I think the pools are going to be sweet, and more people are going to enjoy swimming, and you're going to think of new ways to use them. And this creativity, I think, will inevitably pay great dividends to our community. And so thank you all for hanging in there and finding the solution. I believe there is a potential nominee for a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'd be very pleased to move the staff-recommended options in terms of the aquatics option, implementing the April 10th, 2024 Aquatics Schematic Design Package, on the sustainability option, approving the lead silver equivalent with support for future add-on features, and on the essential services option, upgrading 100% of the new building to operational EOC capability.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, and I now need a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Francois.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilk.
Aye.
Councilmember Silva.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Darling.
Aye.
Mayor Haskins.
With a giant smile, yes, aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. We did it. You did it. It is now ready to move on, and it gives me the right to adjourn the meeting to the next regular meeting on May 7.